It's gonna be a great night.
Oh, we're looking forward to tonight. Of course, this is the first time that pits has ever been in Mianee as well, so we're really excited to see what we can bring to the crowd and of course to those streaming with us at home.
Yeah, it's gonna be an awesome night, Booker. We've got 11 strong teams here.
Oh mate, I'm excited. As we saw on Wednesday, we're excited as these teams coming in, the support that's come from all the clubs for this event is just amazing, absolutely amazing. And the weather's gonna hold off and we're gonna have an absolutely fantastic night's racing.
It's gonna, really, it just does show the esteem that Peter Barry was held in. Sadly, we lost him in 2009. He loved his team's racing and this event has just grown in stature.
It sure has and it's a real honour to him as well to see everyone who comes back year after year. We do rely on the weather, of course, but the weather's been a bit dodgy, but everybody's still turned up. So it's a great testament to, of course, Peter Barry and the Mianee track as well. We know we've been here before this year and we know how hard you work to keep a meeting on track. So I mean, it's great that everybody's turned up from far as well. We've got the Orange Ruffies all the way from down south, so that was a big haul up the island from them.
What about the two Raiders teams? How good is it that one region will bring two teams?
Yeah, and it's really, it's really interesting considering they've just pulled out of Auckland teams as well. So it just goes to show the strength of the class up in the Waikato area as well. It's great. It's great to see.
I know there's a lot of talk about trying to grow this event even more and make it a lot more prestigious, Booker, and you guys are involved. You love your team's racing. 11 good teams. Forget about the Hawks Bay. Who do you think's the outside bet?
Oh mate, it's really hard. It's like I said the other night, you know, like, everybody that turns up here is all class and any of them can win it. And it's really hard to pick. Obviously, you've got the favourites, I think, it was probably Rotorua because they're in good form. But I mean, that Bay team, the Bulldogs, they've shown some real nous at the Auckland teams and they're only growing stronger. So I mean, they could be the dark horse that puts a few people away, mate, to be honest.
You know, that's not the real Bay though. This is the real Bay here.
I was waiting for that from you, Mike.
Let's just clarify that, okay? Look, we've got five previous winners here. That's how strong this event is. Let's have a look at some of that history. Pumas sadly not here, but they made three finals. They've won it twice.
Yeah, and there's a good reason why they're not here too. They do have the Manoa Two champs racing this weekend. However, the weather's not looking too flash for them either. So I know that we won't be taking a late entry, but we might be able to get a few more cheers on the crowd here. But it is sad to see them not here because that would have been a great competition for them to be here. But they've won this previously twice. So yeah, sadly missed this weekend.
Yeah, three finals for the Pumas and the Vulcans who we have here tonight as well. They've reached three finals. They've won it once. And you've got to look at the Stormers. Three times the bridesmaid, never the bride.
Yeah, they could be due too, mate. You know, like, those stats you're talking about, everybody's come close, eh? And the Wanganui has been very strong over the years, haven't they? And the Stormers, like you say, bridesmaids. I mean, it's just, it's so hard to pick, mate. I just, I don't want to be the one that says it's gonna be this one and then everyone's gonna give me grief, you know? So I mean, at the end of the day, whoever wins it, to be the best, you've got to beat the best and they deserve that top step. So yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing how it all plays out, to be honest, Mike.
Yeah, I think we're all looking forward to that, Booker.
Yeah, mate, 100%. I'm just so excited about it. I really am. I was up at 5 o'clock this morning waiting for it to start, you know? So it's all about the fun. And these guys, I walked around talking to some of the drivers before and they were all just pumped. They're ready to go. And it's, it's good to see. They're all loving it and smiles on their faces and that makes it all worth it as well, mate.
There's one guy that stands out from everybody else, Bianca, and that's Kellum Flavell. He's won this twice with the Rascals. He's actually a defending champion, won it with the Kings two years ago. Sure Cyclone Gabriel mucked everything up for us last year. He's back again, could make it four.
He very well could make it four. He's in a really strong team. And just moving back to what you were saying too, the strength of the teams, it's really good to see a mix. We've got a lot of the younger, newer drivers coming through and putting their hands up for teams racing, which is really good. Of course, it's a nice entry into some of these titles that we have later on next year, well, this year, next season. But how exciting to actually have that blend of the newer drivers, the, I don't want to say least experienced, mixed in with the more experienced drivers. And a good, a good show of that is the Auckland team being led by Blake Brooks and Vasey as well. They're really, really good leaders and they've got a really good, a really good vibe going on in the Auckland team. So I'm sorry, guys, but they might be my pick. I know that my home team's sitting over here, but I'm going for Auckland.
Well, I've got to sit on the fence with the Ruffies or the Maulers, you know? I've got to do that. As I say, the real Bay. We'd love to see a Mauler's and Ruffie's final.
Oh, mate, I mean, for us, that'd be the ultimate, wouldn't it? But like, to have the, I think if the Ruffies make the final, it's gonna be the most popular team. People, maybe a person in the house is not happy to see that because they're representing Peter and his colours and that would be something special. I just, words couldn't, can't explain, mate, how special that would be.
I think the emotion in the club rooms would be top level.
Oh, mate, yeah, it would be out the gate. Seriously, it just, yeah. Like I said, at the moment, I can't get words out just thinking about that, that possibility, you know? And like Bianca said, these young guys and girls that are coming through now, it's so good to see, you know? If we don't breed them in now, when do we, you know? So it's great to see them. And they're proud as to make some of them their debuts, being the Peter Barry teams.
I think we're really seeing the fruits of the labour of the mini-stock class from starting 25 years ago. Now we're right in that period where these drivers are coming into their own.
Yeah, and it shows in all classes, not just the stock cars and the superstocks, but the open wheelers through the country as well. And I think that Speedway New Zealand is a really, really exciting time, you know, to be a part of right now because that growth and that strength is just twofold every year, you know? It just gets stronger and stronger. And then we have our more senior drivers who are not aging out. They're actually really happy to be mentors to these newer drivers. You wouldn't have got, sorry, they'll just feel that.
The essential part of a Speedway meeting, the portable barbecue.
Yeah, yeah. And it's really nice to see, you know, these older, more senior drivers being mentors across the board. And they're really fully involved in that stock, sorry, in the mini-stock class as well. So Speedway New Zealand, it's a great sport. It's only getting better and better at the minute.
Yep, absolutely it is. The Ambos just coming in, so just trying to think which way they're gonna head. I think they'll probably switch around in behind Stiffy over there on the camera. Essential part of having a Speedway meeting, isn't it? And a lot of meetings now dictated to with start and finish times by the Ambos.
Well, that's right, mate. We had it out here the other week, didn't we? We had to actually stop. But they do a great job. I mean, to support St John's is just as important as supporting Speedway, you know? Like, they had that meeting over at Hastings the other day, supporting St John's with the car show. And I mean, my granddaughter, she's training to be St John's and it just makes me very proud. And so, like you say, you can't do it without them. And if you're out there, support St John's because they, we need them. We need them on the road. So yeah.
And also, we're raising money for Napier Riding for the Disabled here this weekend. We have the shirt that we traditionally auction off with all of the winning team and managers signing that. We showed that on your show the other night. I'm just wearing a tribute shirt up in the box for the weekend. So it's about raising money for them and keeping the memory of Peter going.
Absolutely, mate. And of course, Murray from League of Speed Media donated that, he's done an amazing drawing as well to go with that. So, and raising money for the riding for disabled. I mean, they support it out the club here all the time. And it's a great charity, Mike. And that shirt, mate, Ken's already put a bid in. So, you know, we're ready to go.
Yeah, we're gonna hold him to that 100. Are you gonna bid for that shirt as well?
Well, I've seen the shirt, but I don't think orange is my colour, to be fair. But I will try and raise some money for charity, absolutely. Just for everyone who is watching at home on the stream who may have not have seen it yet, Mike, where can we actually catch a glimpse of this shirt?
Yeah, it's getting noisy down here, Bianca. Catch a glimpse of that shirt. It's actually sitting, it's pinned up in behind the office at the moment. So anyone coming around through the pit area can have a look in the office here and they'll see it. And also, if you go onto my Facebook page, Mike Wilson, there's a front and back print of that on there.
Perfect. So is that your Facebook page or website, Mike?
Just my Facebook page.
There you go, everybody.
Seems to be where everybody goes these days and has a look on Facebook. Look, you can hear the motors warming up in the background now. Teams are starting to heat up these race cars. We're gonna have a grand parade around about 5 o'clock tonight. So we're not far away. The sun's beating down in the background there, which is great to see. It's a little bit windy. The track is looking really fast. We're ready to go, Booker.
Oh yeah, mate. I've walked out there before and the track's looking spectacular. The team's done a fantastic job. The committee here's done a fantastic job. With the motors roaring, I'm ready to go, mate. I'm so pumped. I can see Bianca's ready to go. We're just, we're chomping a bit for this. This is gonna be spectacular event.
Hard and fast racetrack here tonight, Bianca. We're gonna see some great racing.
I mean, Mianee never lets us down. I've got to say, it is a very, very fast track at the best of times. But with teams racing on there, I mean, I would expect some speed and I really do expect a lot of crashing as well. A lot of damage I would expect only because for a lot of these drivers, this is the last meeting of their season.
Yeah, definitely will. And if they wreck some machinery, maybe it will definitely be their last meeting of the season.
Yeah.
We just have to let the ACM Metal Supply Carter truck in. You can see they're getting ready. The Orange Ruffies are making their way out now. We're not too far away. We're gonna go racing thanks to the Napier City Council. It is the Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to Mianee Speedway for the Napier City Council 2024 Peter Barry Stock Car Memorial Teams.
Hey, g'day. We're here down here. Let's try and grab one of these Ruffies off the cars and have a quick word to them. Come jump over here and have a word to us, mate, before you head round. Hey, how exciting is this, mate? How excited are you right now?
Oh yeah, first time out here, so see how it goes.
Mate, you're representing the underdog team, the Peter Barry team. You must be pretty proud to be doing that.
Yeah, yeah. It's good to be out there representing and just getting out there, teams racing, eh? Have some fun.
That's it, mate. Go join your team. Enjoy it. Have some fun, eh?
Sorry, guys. We're just gonna grab, we were gonna grab Cody Lockett, but he's got the most important job of handing out all the lollies to the crowd. So we might grab him later on in the pits. But here's another young guy we can talk to, Caleb Mooney. Hey, mate, how you doing? Welcome to the Bay.
Yeah, thank you. Good to be here.
Hey, tell us, how good is it to be here not only representing your team but being part of such a great memorial, hey, how you doing? Great memorial for our Peter Barry.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. You know, it's obviously one, we all want to win, you know, and put on a show for also Peter Barry but for our club. So yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Now, you and I have had lots of chats through the year because you've been a great ambassador of this chicken flag and the podium. But introduce us to your team very quickly. Tell us who we can keep an eye out for this weekend.
Well, yes, the team of us, Cody Lockett, Kellum Sturzaker, Larry Smith, myself, Big Ra, and who else we got? Oh, and Bailey Chapman.
Who's running the place of captain this weekend?
Oh, we don't really have a captain. It's just kind of whoever gets picked. On the spot.
Who's Johnny on the spot, eh? Hey, listen, you go and have a catch-up to your car. They've left you well and truly, but good luck for the weekend. Let's hope we can get you on that podium.
Yeah, we'll give it a good go. Thank you.
Awesome. Cheers. I think Booker's got someone behind him. No, he's trying to pull somebody off his car.
I'm trying to. I'm gonna grab someone off this, one of these Stratford boys. See if this man, you wanna come and talk to us, bro. Hey, this is pretty good stuff, mate. The weather's held off. The track's looking fantastic. You made the trip down today. Stratford's looking strong. How's the excitement?
Oh, I'm pretty excited. My South has been a few years since doing some teams racing, but teams looking good. Should be a good night.
Mate, all the streams, teams look strong. Who've you got first up?
Gisborne in the first race and then the Vulcans in the second.
Oh, mate, that's awesome. Hey, look, I wish you all the best. Good luck and have fun.
Thank you, mate.
Cheers. Look, we've got the cowbells going here, Bianca.
Yeah, we have. You can't miss a, this Waikato team when they come out, eh? Look at the smiles on the face. I know that Ameren can get a close up on them. They're absolutely stoked to be here. Look at all of this. Hey, this, you, you, come down here and have a chat with us. How you doing? Introduce yourself. I've never spoken to you before. Hello.
How are we going?
Good, good. Tell us your name.
William White.
William White, is this obviously your first, you're racing in the team, right? You look like this is your first teams race.
No, no, probably like 10, 11th team race.
You're joking? Tell me, how old are you? You look way too young to be doing this as a mum of someone who races Speedway. I think I'm probably just as nervous as what I would be if it was my son out here.
I'm just about to turn 21.
21. Oh, well, there you go. I was well wrong. I was thinking you're a bit younger than that. But tell us, what's it like to be part of such an awesome team, such an awesome environment? You guys have got not one but two teams here this weekend.
Oh, it's bloody awesome, eh? The atmosphere's cool and all the boys are cycling. It's pretty cool to have two teams show up and two strong teams.
And I see Brad Philpott is driving one of the cars as well. So he's here not driving, not part of the team's racing as such, but he's definitely here and is a mentor or a help position.
Yeah, he's always there to support us. It's just quite cool, eh?
You can't ask for a better person to mentor you guys as a teams racer, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's pretty cool.
Hey, listen, your team's well and truly left you. I'm gonna let you go, but tell us again your name?
William.
William, I think you're one of the boys that we might have to keep a close eye on this weekend, William. Good luck for the weekend.
Sweet. Cheers for that.
Awesome. Cool. Thanks.
Another one of those young mini-stock kids there, Bianca.
Look at Dion Henderson. He never, ever fails. Too much disappointment. Look at him up here. Hey, have you got some lollies for us, Dion? Oh, sorry, Mike, what was that?
Yeah, just referring to just yet another one of those young mini-stock kids, Bianca, but he still looks like he should be driving them.
I know. I was quite surprised when he told me his age. I thought he looked about 16 or 17. Here we go. Here's a Rotorua team, of course, Tony. Tony's super excited.
Hey, mate, what another fantastic event. The One NZ guys at the moment, mate, your team must be pretty excited.
Yeah, well, it's the first showing we've got now as One NZ, as the new teams champions. And we've got a couple of guys that are defending champions, including myself on the team. So no, we look really good.
This is a fantastic event. And to see the support here today with all our teams is just making this event what it should be again.
Yeah, that's it. And we spoke about it at the managers' meeting too. Like, it's only gonna get bigger and you know, the support that's gonna come from is gonna be awesome. So no, we're stoked to be here and yeah, hopefully we can have this sort of unofficial One NZ we're wearing proud, yeah.
That's awesome, mate. I'll let you catch up with your team. Thanks for talking to us, Tony.
Thanks very much, eh?
Thanks. He's pretty excited, Bianca, that's for sure.
Yeah, they sure are. This is a Bulldogs team. This is a mixture and a cluster of a lot of drivers. And I in particular wanted to talk to Hadley, who is coming through the gates now. We've seen him in a couple of teams. We've actually seen him in the Rotorua team and of course, the Waikato Raiders team as well. So now he's here for the Bulldogs. So we'll have a quick chat with him and see how that came about. He's a keen, keen, keen teams boy, this one here. Look at him on the back of his car. And I hope there's a big, big, big bucket of lollies for us. Come and have a chat. But you need to take your mouth guard out. Hey, Hadley, how you doing? What's in here, the lollies? I'm gonna pinch some before I keep going. Hadley, I was just giving you a little bit of a talk up while you were coming through the gate. Now, we've seen you in a couple of teams over the, over the past couple of years. But tell us, how did you make it into the Bulldogs team?
Well, a week before, a week and three days before New Zealand's, Bryce Carter rang me up and he goes, "Hey, bro, you wanna team race?" I was, "No, I'm not really racing this season. I'm good," you know? And he goes, "Well, what do you need to get your car going?" And I said, "Look, I need an engine." So then James Prophet, he's a 913R. He goes, "Hey, man, chuck my engine in your car." So then a week and three days, man, had the car from sitting out in the fucking rain for a year to race-ready.
And here you go. So it was a bit of a rush to get here. Tell us how many hours you've spent in the garage to try and get it here tonight?
Oh, too many late hours, man. Like, I was going to work at 4:00 in the morning and then I'd come home at 5:00, work on the car till 1:00 o'clock, go to bed. Crew were there every night, you know? Oh, it just countless amount of hours. You strip the whole car down to nothing. You put it all back together, which is what you do for teams racing.
Absolutely. And if there was, you know, one, one driver in this class that I would say is gives 110%, 110% of the time, Hadley, I would always mention you because you are a team, a teams man, not only in the car but also help out wherever you can.
Yeah, sure, man. Like, if I had a team next to us, had a broken car and their crew were struggling and I knew what was wrong with it, I'd get over there and help them. Just what you do, you know? The war's on the track, not in the pits.
Absolutely. And I love the, I love the way you explain that too because you are one of the most genuine people walking around the pit. So it's nice that you've mentioned that. Tell us, you've got your family here this weekend. What would it mean for you and the family to be able to take this away?
Well, oh, I can't say. It'll just be wicked, awesome, fun. You know, we come here to just have fun. We don't want, we just want to go out there and have fun. A winning's a bonus, but we just had to go hard.
Hadley, tell us, are you happy with the draw at the moment? Or your draw, I should say?
I thought it was stitched up, eh? Like, two Raiders teams, but oh, it is what it is, eh?
Listen, I've got my lollies. That's all I'm happy with. I love speaking to you as always. Go and join your team. They're way, way over there. So you're gonna get a couple of steps and a lot of exercise in. Good luck, Hadley. Well done.
Hey, Bianca, Hadley, he really sort of summed it up, you know? There's so much that goes on behind the scenes that the fans don't know about, just how hard these guys work for their passion. They may be friends in the pits as well, but when they're out on that racetrack, they're enemies.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mike. I kind of heard what you said. I was a little bit in and out because it's so loud down here. But listen, we do have Tony, sorry, Booker down here with a couple of drivers.
Yeah, I'm standing here with a couple of the Gisborne team. How excited are you, mate, for this event?
Oh, we're ready to go, eh? We're pumped.
Mate, I've seen you racing, doing things. Your car's been going well. You must be excited as well, eh?
Oh, yeah, it's pretty exciting. The car doesn't go too bad. We've had a pretty good season so far. Just want to finish it off with winning Peter Barry's.
So the sale didn't go through then?
No, not yet. No, no, it hasn't. I still, I still want to sell it though.
If the wife lets him, that's what he's got to say, people. Look, you guys are putting on a great effort, bugging the trip over here. The track's looking good. Who you got first up?
Racing the Stormers first up. Should be a pretty even race, so we'll see how we go.
Hey, that's awesome, guys. Hey, listen, I'll let you carry on. You've already walked around or driven around, but good luck tonight and enjoy.
Thank you. Cheers. Thanks, guys.
Thanks. We've got Bianca over there with one of the Hellycats.
Yes, I do. Blake Brooks, great friend of Pits Media. Blake, you've made a long journey down from Auckland. You've got a reasonably mixed bag in teams of, in terms of your team over here. Can you tell us who's actually on your team this weekend?
So there's myself, Sam Wright, I should actually know, Tyler Robinson, Max Walton, Bryce and Carl. It's Bryce and Carl's first teams meeting, so it's good to see what they can do.
In terms of prep for them, because this isn't just normal racing, you get out on the track and you go for gold, how do you prep these drivers and keep them calm, make sure they're doing the things they're meant to do? Do you just sit them out? Do you chuck them in the deep end? How do you navigate through that, Blake?
Everyone reacts differently. I mean, I love being thrown in the deep end straight off the bat and I think Bryce is the same and Carl is the same. But I mean, we've got a lot of experience in the team with Gary and Scotty and Corey and they're not here and Matty's our manager this time down. So I mean, there's a lot of experience. Me and Sam have got some meetings under our belt. So we just talk to the boys. We be honest with them. Hey, it's gonna hurt, but we're gonna have fun and we're gonna go to the end, buddy. So I mean, we can only say certain things, but they've just got experience themselves. And hey, we'll see what happens after the first race.
It's like anything else, I guess, that you can explain until the cows come home. But until you've experienced for that first time, I guess there's just no words that can match what's actually going on.
100%. Teams is just a different kettle of fish. And I mean, that's why we're all here. We all love it. It's something different. You're not just out there spinning laps. You're out there being a team and supporting each other and being there for the boys. So I mean, we're all looking forward to it. The boys have been a part of the team, the squad this season. And I mean, it's time to put them to work.
Absolutely. And no pressure or anything, Blake, but I have actually in our opening interviews picked Auckland for the team to take this away. And I think I've picked that because there's a good mix of the old and the new, or the senior and the junior drivers. But I think put that together and, you know, with their experience and leadership, Auckland have a really good chance at this.
100%. I mean, all the teams are good and every, every teams meeting, they're getting better and better and it's good to see. But I mean, the thing with our team is there's new boys in there and me and Sam are still fresh and no one knows what we're gonna do and what we can do. So I mean, the boys back home know what we can do and it's good to see that we can, you know, put our, put our skills to the limits.
Blake, do you think the likes of, you know, some of these superstock drivers might be watching you guys, egging you on from home? Because this is representing not just you guys, but your club as well?
100%. I hope they're all behind us. I mean, that's why we've got a letter on our car, right? We represent our clubs with pride. And I mean, the Auckland boys in the both classes are really good. So I hope they're supporting us and we hope to do them proud.
Yeah, I'm sure they are. I'm sure they're watching from home. Very good afternoon to you, by the way, if you are watching. Listen, Blake, I'm gonna let you get back to your, oh no, look at this. I'm gonna let you get back to your team, Blake. Good luck for the weekend. Wish you all the luck in the world. Hopefully it doesn't hurt too much, eh?
Thank you very much.
No worries. Hey, look behind us. Look, I've got the treats from everywhere. For anyone who doesn't recognise him, I mean, oh, I don't know, it could be Sam. Sam, come and talk to us about your team very quickly.
Yeah, the Rotorua Rascals or the Makita Rotorua Rascals, they're here. We're gonna try and win back this Peter Barry team. We haven't had it for a couple of years, so it's ours now. We're gonna come back and try and take it home, especially with this trophy. You know, we'll try and fill our trophy cabinet this year.
Well, the trophy cabinet is actually gonna be rather full. You've got so many, so many additions this year. But also the new addition as well. I've been updated by your snap and the Rotorua track is looking totally different.
Oh yeah, we've got no Advent Tower. We've got no toilet block. We've just got an empty spot and stand. And his team have been, the last couple of days have been taking bulldozers to it. And yeah, the track looks completely different now. So yeah, good credit to them. You know, they've done an awesome job.
How do you think this weekend is gonna go? The rain is obviously gone. We're gonna be good to go. I don't, I don't think we're gonna have to mention that dirty word again. But what are your predictions for this weekend, Sam?
It's gonna be a Rascals-Ruffie's final. There we go.
Oh, nice.
There you go. Mike said nice, but we'll see, we'll see.
I'll tell you what, Bianca, it's seven long years since the Rascals went back to back. So it's been a long time and they're another team that has been in the final twice, won it twice.
I think they can just share these trophies around, but they've already won enough this year.
I want you to try, I want you to try and lift that Peter Barry trophy, Bianca. It's one of the heaviest trophies in New Zealand motorsport, I would think.
I will do use that for you, Mike. I know that it was on the back of the youth somewhere. So if I can find it, I will 100% do that for you.
Will you load up on some of those lollies and get some sugar in you and we'll have a look, eh?
Okay, we're standing here with the young man. You've done very well this year, Caleb. From at Mianee Mauler again, mate. The excitement's built. I've been so pumped all day and waiting for this, mate. You must be just as excited.
Yeah, no, it's pretty exciting. A teams race at our home track in front of our home crowd. It doesn't get much better than this, really.
It doesn't, mate. Now, I don't want you to do what we saw you do a couple of years ago over there, eh, in the corner, mate?
Yeah, no, I've grown a brain. Hopefully we get better than that.
Hey, that's beautiful. Hey, how's the morale on the team at the moment, mate?
Yeah, it's good, eh? We're pretty social. All get, get on pretty good. So yeah, it's good vibes. That's what we want.
That, that makes it a lot easier done at a teams race.
Oh, definitely. You know, you can always back the brothers, really, to get you through the fucking thing.
I saw that, yeah. But he's sorry about that swear word, people. We did stop and stutter there.
I think he said rocking.
Rocket, yeah.
Hey, Booker, Booker, ask him if he's already prepared his podium speech.
Mike wants to know, have you prepared your podium speech?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I heard about the last one, mate. Hey, listen, we won't hold you up anymore. You've got to run all the way over there and catch up with your team now, Caleb. But good luck tonight, mate, and we'll hope to see you tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, as well, for coming on video.
Cheers, mate. Well, Bianca, they're all, oh, here we go. She's got young Ethan Levine coming to talk to her.
Ethan Levine, I've seen your dad struggling with that Wellington banner there before. I was having a good old laugh. I thought it was actually gonna blow him all the way down the, down the front straight. Welcome to Mianee and you're a keen, keen teams man. You're here, you're excited. We're good to go.
Yeah, happy to be here. Glad the sun's coming out now. It's a bit too bright, actually. But yeah, last teams meeting for the season, so I look forward to demoing my car and fixing it all off-season.
I would not actually second guess that as well. If there's one man that's gonna ruin everything, either your, your car and every other car on track, it's gonna be you. But that is how much you love teams racing, yeah?
Yeah, I just honestly, I just, I just like wrecking stuff. Loved it from a, from a young age. And yeah, you give me the chance to go out there and start wrecking stuff and I'm happy.
This is why time and time again, you're in the team. Talk to us about the track. You've had a little, little walk on it. You've seen it. It's nice and sticky. What are your expectations for it? How's it gonna hold up?
Um, yeah, looking at this weather, it's quite moist in the air. I reckon it's, it's not gonna go slick. Probably will rut up. No, and no one around here, she always loves to rut up. But it does look quite hard-packed actually. So yeah, we'll, we'll see. But hopefully I'm looking for a good surface and yeah, equal playing field for everyone. So yeah.
Tell us, what kind of surface do you like racing teams on? Individual is totally different. I know you guys like a quicker track, but how do you like your tracks for teams racing?
Um, for most teams racing, we do end up getting a bit more of a tacky track, apart from Second Night in Palmer for the big superstock one where they got the Supersaloons. So that normally does slicken it up. But a tacky, a tacky teams track is good. It's actually a bit safer as well. You get a bit slick out there. You can put your car in some pretty bad positions if it's a bit slick. So yeah, a tacky teams racing track is always, you know, a lot funner, probably a lot, lot safer for the drivers, but a lot, a lot faster. But yeah, once she goes slick, she's definitely a different playing field.
Now, I know how competitive you, you are, you personally and your brother, and there is absolutely nothing wrong with that. But tell us, what are your expectations for the weekend? And do you think
But tell us, what are your expectations for the weekend and do you think that Wellington can bring it home?
Yeah, always the goal is to bring it home. We've got a few green ones in the team this weekend, which is good. Get those good ones, all those young ones, a bit of experience and see what they got, give them the opportunity and, you know, build a team for next year. It's always about building, you know, get in those drivers there. If you don't bleed new drivers and build a team, you're gonna end up, you know, once your top drivers move on or whatnot, you end up getting yourself in a bit of a rut. So it's always about bleeding those guys that wanna do it, getting them in, seeing what they got, really.
And how lucky are we that we do have that nice blend from the Wellington? It's a real shame, though, that of course Tai can't be a part of this team. He did get injured down in, sorry, Palmerston a couple of months ago and he's still not available for teams racing.
Yeah, a bit of a bother with Jayden. He's definitely gonna be a bit like his old man and his grandad one day, a bit of a wrecking ball. But yeah, it would be good to have Jayden here and a couple of those other younger ones that wanna do it. But like you said, injuries do happen and it's a bummer of the sport, but we just hope for speedy recoveries. And yeah, we'll have Jayden here next year and we'll see what Jayden's really got. And I was gonna say, he's got something good.
Well, like you say, given the Thai blood, his grandad and his dad, I wouldn't expect anything less, right?
Yeah, neither. I would not expect anything less. He will just be a wrecking ball out there, which I love to see.
I think when he put his name up for teams racing, the first person that he actually targeted down in Wellington was Sheldon Arapiri. And I thought, my golly me, if that's a statement, you know, I never have seen one quite so strong.
Yeah, yeah, we call Brendan TRT, Turn Right Thai, and I don't think Jayden's much different.
Both meet here today. But listen, thanks for your words. We always like speaking to you. Good luck. Tell us your draw. Who are you up against first?
We've definitely got the toughest of the weekend. We've got Rotoroo, the champions, up first. And then we've got Waikato in the second one, who's yeah, another real, real good team. We had them obviously at the New Zealand's in Auckland and it was a close one and we got away with it. But yeah, we always do have a good battle with Waikato, so yeah, it can go either way.
Well, I don't know about you, but I'm actually starting to get super excited right now to hear you talking about it. You need to go and focus, get ready and do your thing, so we'll let you go. But thank you as always and good luck for the weekend.
Ah, thank you.
Cheers.
First out the gate, it is the 65 of Royden Hind for the Orange Ruffies. Followed out by the 86 Bradley Singer. Now Bradley Singer, taking the East Coast title just two weeks ago. And an interesting story about Brad Singer. He actually was given a Peter Barry body from one of the teams races many, many years ago when he was a little kid. And it used to sit in the garage and Brad Singer would put a beer crate on the floor and sit inside that body and pretend he was racing at the Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams. And now here we are, 2024, and he is realising a dream. So your line up for the Orange Ruffies, 11 of Jason Stevens, 24 Daniel Melling, 27 Isaac Fothergill, 65 Royden Hind, 81 Darren Yaxley and the 86 of Bradley Singer. So we see the 26, Kailan Mooney will go from grid position one with the 65 of Royden Hind on the outside for the Ruffies. Then it'll be Brad Singer for the Ruffies in the 86 car on three. Outside him for the Vulcans, the 15 of Sturzaker. Trying to pick up that, the 3NZ car of Cody Lockett that will go from grid position seven. 24 of Daniel Melling for the Ruffies on, sorry, Lockett on five and Daniel Melling on six. Final row. We see the 267. 287 Bailey Chapman on eight. As we get ready to rock and roll, let's go. The lights are green. Peter Barry Memorial Teams is a go and already the 15 of Sturzaker spins on turn one. Ten lap races through these heats today. And it's the 26 of Mooney leading out from the 86. Bradley Singer in that second position giving chase. Daniel Melling paying close attention to Chapman up there at turn one. Chapman gets a big serve. Singer closing in on the race leader. Third place there for the Ruffies, the 81 of Darren Yaxley. Royden Hind gets taken to the grass by the 15 of Sturzaker, has to redress. But Mooney trying to stay away from the prowling 86 of Singer. Chapman now paying attention. Sturzaker gets taken to the wall. New race leader, the Ruffies out in front with the 86 of Bradley Singer. Oh, roadblock on the main straight for Chapman in the 287. It is the Ruffies leading from Vulcans, Ruffies Vulcans. And there's the contact on the back straight that we wanna see. The 3NZ car push hard on the wall. Cody Lockett, hard into the wall on the back straight. 81 of Darren Yaxley was in that mix as well. Still Singer out in front. He's got a Royden Hind, he's got Hind running shotgun. Singer runs out wide. Is there a problem there for Singer? He's gonna let the 65 of Royden Hind go back by. That's a smart move. He can see that the 3NZ of Cody Lockett is there, trawling the pole line. Daniel Melling backing off down here at turn four for the Ruffies as well. Back around the outside goes Singer. Nice work done by the Ruffies. Royden Hind running block and now will go after the 3NZ car. One of the Ruffies drivers parked up on one and two. Ruffies looking like they could be in control at the moment with the race lead, but it is the Vulcans running in two and three. Hit down there for Melling, gets turned by the 287 of Chapman. Three laps to go. It is Singer still out in front. Royden Hind running shotgun. Hind currently in fourth position in the 65 car. We keep an eye on the 3NZ down the bottom turn here, Cody Lockett. And again, the 287 car of Chapman spins off turn number four. 15 of Callum Sturzaker in second place, still on the lead lap with the 26 of Mooney. The Vulcans will be desperate to stop the 86 car. And again, the Ruffies doing great block work. Managing to keep Cody Lockett in the 3NZ car pinned and then spins him on the entry to turn number three. White flag with one to go for Singer. The 86 car for the Ruffies could take the big slice of points and it'll all come down to where they stack up in behind. Lockett lies in wait in the 3NZ car on turn three. Royden Hind steams around the outside. He's gonna run block for Singer. Singer gets, oh, he double guesses it. Where's he gonna go? Singer's gonna have to push him across the line. He does so well. That was close. And Sturzaker's got it. Sturzaker stole it. Sturzaker steals it by 0.04 of a second. Wow. 15v Callum Sturzaker, the unofficial race one winner for the Vulcans. 86 Bradley Singer for the Ruffies in second. Race is still live. So final drivers come under the flag before the caution. Wow. And that was just heat number one, race fans. So unofficial, 15 for the Vulcans, Sturzaker for the win, 86 Ruffies, Bradley Singer in second. 65 for the Ruffies, Royden Hind will finish third with the 26 Vulcans driver, Kailan Mooney, fourth. 3NZ Vulcans Cody Lockett for fifth. Sixth place, 287 Vulcans driver Bailey Chapman. Seventh, 24 Orange Ruffies Darren Melling and the 81 Orange Ruffies driver for Darren Yaxley. Wow, the Ruffies will feel like they were absolutely burgled out of that. Singer, long time race leader with a provisional points total of 130 to 65 in the Vulcans' favour. Well, that was certainly what we wanna see in teams racing. It looked like Royden Hind was gonna be able to put the block moves on off that final turn to allow Bradley Singer to go through. But definitely the two Vulcans drivers, they worked well together and just were able to just pin Singer enough for that very, very slightest margin race win. Give them a round of applause as they come round. Vulcans working hard, taking out teams race number one here at the Napier City Council Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams. Race number two up next, it will be the Stratford Stormers versus the Gisborne Gladiators. We know the Gladiators very familiar with this racetrack, long history of doing teams racing here. Well, certainly didn't expect that finish, but that is the beauty of teams racing.
Mike, it certainly is. I'm just down here, pit side. I've got Amarron going up in town, the grids, you can see the look in all of these drivers' eyes. Unfortunately, the Orange Ruffing that 86B just drove past us, heads down. It just comes down to experience, doesn't it? But when you're trying to avoid the blockers of 3NZ Cody Lockett and then you've got Kailan Mooney as well, I didn't think there was any chance he's gonna get through, to be fair.
Yeah, it wasn't very much room left for him at all. What a debut, though, for Bradley Singer. Brilliant drive, almost did everything right. In fact, didn't really do anything wrong, just the Vulcans had a little bit more experience on the final lap.
100%. I was actually rooting for him all the way, but if that was a start of the meeting and the finish of the meeting, I'm pretty happy that it's happened that way. That was an awesome race.
Well, I tell you, if that was a final, we'd all go home really happy, wouldn't we? Because, you know, that was excitement all the way through and there was a lot of contact, a lot of hits, some good hard hits as well. But all cars drivers still able to drive back in through the pit.
Yeah, listen, and we can't go and talk to any of their drivers, of course, until they've gone and had their medicals and the head check. So we will go down and talk to Sturzaker, but what a drive from him. He got spun up in the first lap and came away with the win. That is definitely the driver of the night for me so far. It doesn't get any better than that.
Oh, hopefully we can top that and just keep getting better and better as this meeting unfolds. As an added bonus and prestige for our next matchup with the Stormers versus the Gladiators, it is the Rees Shield that is up for grabs as well. Really looking forward to that.
I think Amarron, our cameraman, will be able to go and get a couple of shots of that too. I see him screaming down the pits at the minute. Bryce has got a hold of it. He's got a tight hold of it. He doesn't wanna give that up either, does he? There we go. I don't know if everybody can see that at home, but that is the Rees Shield.
It's a pretty cool looking shield, too.
Hey, we do appreciate everybody at home having some patience here. We're just making sure the track is right and the drivers are for this second race. Of course, it's Stratford and Gisborne. They're about to come on the track shortly.
Yeah, let's have a quick look at the lineup. So the 22 for Stratford is Jeremy Bunting. The 32, Todd Duffy. 96 is Carl Giddy. 517 Mark Woods. 617 of Mason Woods and the 712 of Stephen Reed with the team manager Bryce Jensen. And for the Gisborne Gladiators, the 13 of Lucas Haye, 48 of Josh Mulcahy, 71 Ethan Bruce, 84 Hayden Barker, who you interviewed earlier on, 164 of William Carr and sixth driver Dana Kingsbury, who is also team manager alongside Nigel Hazleton.
God, let me tell you, I found this trophy. It doesn't look heavy at all, but I went to pick it up and oh my gosh, that's a proper deadlift. Just as well the cameraman's not here, but I can confirm that it's a very heavy trophy, Mike.
It didn't happen unless we can see it.
I'll see what I can do, eh?
So a little bit of moisture going down on the track, as I explained earlier on, you know, with the likelihood that it was going to be raining today, they just were unsure how much moisture to put into this track and you can see we need to put a little bit in, but that's a good thing. Because it's even harder taking moisture back out of a racetrack. So the first of the Stormers, the 517 Mark Woods goes to the outside on grid number two. I'll just correct that. They will go from grid one with Mark Woods on the inside because it'll be Barker in the 84. That for the Gladiators, it'll go off two. Grid three for the 13 of Lucas Haye for the Gladiators. The 617 Stormers for Mason Woods on four. Looks like grid five for the Stormers will be Todd Duffy in the 32 car. With the 164 of William Carr for the Gladiators off six. 71 Ethan Bruce for the Gladiators goes from seven. And the 742 of Stephen Reed, who will go from grid position number eight for the Stormers. Pit gate locked and loaded thanks to Fence Direct. Alexander Electric Peshoot. About to make its way off the track. Here we go. Peter Barry Memorial Teams, heat number two. The Stormers versus the Gladiators for the Rees Shield as well. And Booker is on the brakes. Barker not keen to go. And it's the 517 out in front.
Oh, a big hit already on turn two. Hard hit, hard contact in the wall and suspension damage already for the 71 car. Ethan Bruce collapsed right front suspension, still on the gas down into turn one. Car's a bit hard to control. Being chased by the 32. The 517 of Mark Woods is parked up in the fence, so one of the Stormers drivers already out. We've got another car pinned up the wall as well. Looks like one of the Gisborne drivers has pinned the 742 of Stephen Reed. I think it's the 13G, is it, parked up? 32 race leader. Todd Duffy for the Stormers is in front with the 84G of Hayden Barker in second. We go red. Red for, it would a little either be for the car on turn two or an exposed cage situation there on turn one. 742 of Stephen Reed. Well, some hard contact early on in this Rees Shield teams race. Well, Bianca, there's no shortage of action early on at this PB teams event. She's not answering because she's so keen to see it.
Mike, sorry, I am here. Sorry, I was just trying to turn on my microphone. Yeah, I'm actually down here. I'm gonna interrupt really quickly and take the tension away from what's happening on the track to what happened a couple of minutes ago. I'm here with Cody, Cody Lockett from Wonga Nui. That was an absolutely epic win. You just turned it on and knew exactly that you had a little bit of damage coming down this back straight and you're like, I have to go into block position. What a job you did.
Yeah, no, it was good. A bit too close for us, but yeah, no, we'll take it.
I mean, there's close and then there's whatever that was. That was super close, yeah?
Yep, too close.
But how good was your, the gentleman over here who actually took the win, who doesn't wanna come and talk to us, he's just a little bit camera shy, I think. He knew straight away, he got spun up in that first lap, but he just kept racing to the flag, took away the win. I mean, he must be pretty happy with himself.
Yep, no, he should be. He screwed on.
Yeah, yeah, very good. Hey, tell us, what does it mean to you and the team? You're just a relatively young team. What does it mean to actually take away that win first off?
It's good. We're a young team, we're building and yeah, I think we're going forward.
Absolutely. I think you guys might be the team to win. I didn't pick you to win, but I've still got a close eye on you anyway. But Mike, what do you reckon? Any questions for young Cody Lockett down here?
Oh, I just think they did a great job, you know. It looked like they're on the back foot all the way through and then came down to the last lap.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, who are you up against in your second race tonight, Cody? Stratford. So this is why you're here watching with a close intent.
Yep, yep, no, that's it.
Well, they've got a couple of cars down already, so you might be in luck.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hey, we'll throw it back up to you, Mike. I can barely see, I'm too short to see anything around here, so you might have a better idea of what's going on.
Hey, thanks. That was a big hard hit from the 13 Gladiators driver Lucas Haye. Put a big massive hit on the 742 of Stephen Reed for the Stormers and put him out of this teams race. Gladiators showing us that they know how to put in those hits. We didn't certainly, well, we knew they would. They're not disappointing. 32 Todd Duffy for the Stormers is your race leader. As we go back to green and straight away going back to the infield, the 517. Mark Woods is back in this teams race. Keep an eye on the 13 car. Lucas Haye is looking for a victim and he will take on the 617 of Mason Woods. And Haye gets spun by Woods. Going through the 32. The Stormers are doing some good block work. Oh, and he slips around the outside again. Duffy is on the march. The 164 of William Carr couldn't do anything for the Gladiators. And now the 71 is trying to hold up. Ethan Bruce is on the brake, holds up the race leader. New race leader now for the Stormers. 617 Mason Woods has gone through. Woods down into turn number three, chased by the 84 of Hayden Barker, both on the lead lap. Barker now consenses opportunity as Woods goes into defensive mode. Four laps to go. The Rees Shield up for grabs. The 71G of Ethan Bruce, remember he's got damage to the right front. Puts the brake on and holds up the 32 of Duffy. Duffy slips, tries to slip by on the inside, gets taken to the grass and has to address that situation. Hasn't yet got back on the track. And Barker for the Gladiators has taken over the lead, third different race leader. And with the laps ticking by, there's no one within half a lap of Barker. He's got a teammate in front of him. Two laps to go. The tyre general 13G car of Lucas Haye does a fantastic job of pinning the 32 of Duffy to the grass. One lap to go. The Gladiators out in front with the 84 of Hayden Barker. The Rees Shield on the line as a bonus. And a Gladiator's car in front. As Barker steams around the outside of his teammate to take the chicken flag. The Gladiators have done a great job and it is not over yet. Only two cars across the line so far with the 617S of Mason Woods in second. We're still live. The 13 of Haye will come to the line. He was certainly right in the thick of the action. The 13 of Hay will come to the line. He was certainly right in the thick of the action. Plenty of Gladiator's cars still circulating, but some pretty torn up machinery. Look at the back of the 32S car of Duffy's. He's got right rear damage, right front damage. I think he's got three flat tyres at least because that left rear is also deflated. And as the caution lights come on, a provisional result for the Gladiators, the 84 Hayden Barker taking the win, 617S Mason Woods second, 13G Lucas Hay third, 71G Ethan, that's just changed on me, 32S Todd Duffy being credited with third, 13G Lucas Hay four, 71G Ethan Bruce in fifth and final finisher 164G William Carr. So it looks like, well, it's definitely a points advantage that we know to the Gladiators. They'll take the Rees Shield and I think a provisional, we'll just work that out for you.
Hey, Mike, while you're working that out, I'm down here with Kayla Mooney. That was such a good win. I was, it came so close. A win is a win, but tell us, you were right there on the start-finish line. Did you think you could do it?
Oh, it was always worth a try. That's why we stopped there. Yeah, we knew it was close. You know, it's when I'd come around to turn four or turn three to see the, you know, our Wongans crew, you know, cheering us on. So that's when I knew that we had done it. So yeah, it was close.
It was really insightful too of Cody Lockett, just to realise he had to go into that block position literally within an instant. I could almost see the brain tick over, go right, this is my job now. As a team, do you speak about instances like that that would happen? And how do you explain to these newer drivers, if you do have to make that change, how to make that change?
We briefly touch on it. We don't really go on how we're going to do it because, you know, we just take it how it comes. And yeah, you know, we all have a set plan on what we're going to do, but any role can change it anytime. So yeah, we just wing it really.
How good is it though that a team can come this close? You're all smiling. I mean, you're straight across the way here to Orange Ruffees. They're not smiling. But in all honesty, that was such a good Teams Race. It could have gone either way. Of course, you guys were the victors, but it means a lot to you as well because you actually raced so well as a team. There was not one individual person racing out there.
Yeah, no, we have a pretty good team environment. So, you know, we all jail quite well together and, you know, so it's, yeah, it is, it is good.
Absolutely. And I think everybody loved it too. The whole crowd, I was over on turn four and they all erupted like, oh, this, this was on. It did help that it was your crowd, of course, but well done. Congratulations. I'll let you get back to it. You guys don't seem to have many damage. It seems to be all systems are go down here.
Yeah, all the cars look pretty good. So it's a good check over again and yeah, get ready for the Stratford race.
Awesome. Go hard. Be safe.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Great interview there Bianca. Let's look at our confirmed results from our first Teams Race, the Ruffees versus the Vulcans. It was a win by 130 points to 65 for the Vulcans. And your provisional results from that Stratford versus Gisborne matchup, the Stormers and the Gladiators, provisional result 155-40.
If motorsport is in your blood, then Speedway Garage Palmerston North and Wonganui is your home away from home. From Speedway trivia nights, car reveals and good dirt track banter, along with great food that has our famous steaks, roast of the day and classic pub meals, Speedway Garage is the place to be. We look forward to hosting you at one of our two locations, 528 Main Street Palmerston North or 45 Anzac Parade Wonganui. Don't forget to check out the Pits TV Garden Bar. See you at the finish line.
Hot laps are done. Now we will see who's coming down to get the three minute bell. First in is the 208 of Blake Brooks. The Ali Cats driver will park up. Tony Allen Auto Service Limited sponsored team. Looks like Willie Stevenson for the Maulers will come in.
Hey, Mike, I thought I might just check on you. How's your nerves up there? You all good?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. What am I saying? I'll tell you, the first time I saw the Hawkeyes when the Superstock teams at Palmerston North, I was a wreck.
I can absolutely imagine. And funny you say that. I was just speaking to Jason Long up there too. It's really good to see Jason Long. No longer actually Teams Racing are in the Superstock, but he's here lending a hand. He'd actually be a really good man of influence to keep that, you know, the team calm and really sort of give a lot of guidance and wisdom. And of course, we've got Randy T here as well. He's here watching, I mean, he's from the Bay of course, but he could also be here supporting the Orklin team. I will try and speak to him shortly and look at these guys. Here they go over the fence. But hey, you've really got your job cut out for you in this race especially, Mike, because both teams having white bodies, it's going to be a hard one for you to call and pick.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll just rely on the old lap scoring as well. But hey, hopefully you do get to talk to Randy T a little bit later if you can, because I just want to know if he is sitting on the fence between the Ali Cats and the Maulers.
You know, that's going to be my first question I'll ask him too, eh? He actually might avoid me because of that too.
Yeah, he may well do. He's a humble man sometimes, is Randy T. So the 94 car of Sam Wright's there for the Ali Cats as well. Really had the 208 of Blake Brooks, 85 Stevenson. And then you can see right behind, just about everybody's there. Just checking on Humble in the 46 for the Maulers. Sydney 5 car there of Leroy O'Reilly. They were just looking in the right side of the engine there. Just having a look in there. Not really sure what they could be adjusting or looking at there. The 89 for the Ali Cats is also there, Max Walton. 62 on the outside of the Motorworks tow, on the inside, well, sandwiched in fact, between those two Motorworks tow trucks, the 62A of Tyler Robertson. So only three cars actually on the infield waiting to go out onto the track. Everybody else down here using that three minute bell. And as I explained earlier on, there is only one three minute bell. When it starts, that's how long you have. And we've just gone past one and a half minute, so still about a one minute 20 to go. And if you think a minute 20 is a long time when you're looking at it counting down, it isn't when you're there trying to work on a race car. They lower back down the 85 car of Stevenson. So another driver that's just wanted to make that little adjustment to the left rear shock. David Jones, clerk of the course, just talking to the drivers to make sure that everybody is good to go. Remember, no one can leave this three minute bell area until he says so. Always remember Teams Race, long, long time ago, when I was starting to learn the old craft of commentating. And I was on the infield and there was a red light and I took advantage to go and chat to Regan O'Brien while he was on the track. And it was a great interview. But afterwards, the other team tried to protest and say I was giving him outside information, which I wasn't, but could have been, you know, maybe looked that way. But who in their right mind now would go out in the middle of a track? Or who would even be allowed to do that? It just wouldn't happen. So you can tell how, how much Speedway has evolved over the last so many years. Caleb Island has gone on to grid position one in the 19 car for the Maulers. And he is right out on that track as well. He's going to squeeze up the Ali Cats driver. And that will be the 351 of Bryce Vasey for the Ali Cats who will go from two. The 92 Carl Garnett for the Ali Cats on three, the 46 of Humble for the Maulers on four. Waiting for the third row. Moving up on to grid position number six will be the 89 of Max Walton for the Ali Cats. Willie Stevenson for the Maulers on five. Then it will be Sam Wright in the 94 for the Ali Cats who'll slot into grid number seven with the 10 of Ethan Dorwood on eight. That's your grid lineup. Heat number three, Napier City Council, East Coast, Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams. Parked up behind the Alexander Electric Pashute. Let's go Teams Racing. Caleb Island straight away on the gas. Row four hasn't moved. Dorwood and Wright still parked up on the main straight. It is the 19 of Caleb Island out in front. One of the Ali Cats drivers is spun. Think it was the 92 of Garnett. Caleb Island in front, 351 Vasey giving chase. Then it's the 85 of Stevenson. Humble gets spun on the back straight. Dorwood, oh, hard hit on the wall. The wing has come loose. 351 Vasey goes through. 19 Caleb Island in second now. Island tries to get the run. Oh, hard hit into Vasey and Island spins himself out. Willie Stevenson now will pick up the chase in the 85 for the Maulers. Well, Caleb Island putting in a hard, oh, we go red. Well, we've gone red. Is that for the 19 car? Where's the Pashute heading right now? And they are looking at that car that's on the back straight. Is it a wheel guard?
No, 351.
35, 351 Bryce Vasey. Okay, so Vasey disqualified for attacking over the pole line.
Oh, I hate this rule, but goodness me.
That's the word from Bill Clarkson, the referee.
Yeah, that's a huge call and a huge loss for this team.
So drama already in round three. Stevenson will now pick it up as the race leader for the Maulers. The 85 crossing the stripe with seven to go. Still the 19 of Caleb Island for the Maulers sitting there in second position and waiting for the third driver to cross the stripe there. That will be the 89 Ali Cats of Max Walton. Walton a long way behind. The Ali Cats now on the back foot here in this round. The 92 car of Carl Garnett just trolling the pole line. Ethan Dorwood under attack from the 89 car Walton. Walton in third place. So the 10 of Dorwood is doing a good job to block his run. Maulers are looking strong early on. Sam Wright's on the grass in the 94. The Ali Cats are in trouble. Dorwood still blocks the run of the 89. Walton finally gets around the outside. Stevenson for the Maulers in the 85 car is the race leader. Running shotgun with him there is the 19 of Caleb Island. Keep an eye on the 94 of Sam Wright. Wright's going to turn right and does so. Stevenson also gets collected by his teammate. Now Caleb Island in the 19 car is the race leader. Contact on the back straight. Humble takes one of the Ali Cats into the wall. In fact, that's the 89 of Walton for the Ali Cats that he's pinned in there. Still that loose wing sitting on top of the 19 car. Oh, Caleb Island's got a right flat tyre, the right rear. As the 92 of Garnett misses his opportunity on Stevenson. And the 85 Maulers driver has gone back into the race lead. The 46 of Humble is down here on pit turn. Will he run block for Stevenson? And you bet your life on that one. Maulers running one and two, but how long can Caleb Island stay? And second, Ireland with a big shot. Huge shot there on the 94 of Sam Wright. And that wing, well, looking a little precarious right now. And you can see the damage to Caleb Island in that 19 car. Sam Wright gives the 46 of Humble a nudge. Two laps to go. Another shot up there at turn one and two. And that was with the 92 car of Garnett and the 10 of Dorwood. White flag is out for Stevenson. Half a corner to go for the 85 Maulers driver. Dorwood pins the 92. Oh, he missed and Stevenson takes the big points. Well, we're still green. Stevenson has come across the line for the win. Caleb Island, I think, has picked up second place. We've got to wait for those provisional results. And we go caution with the lights. So races over 85B. Willie Stevenson for the Maulers for the win. 19B of Caleb Island second. It's at least 140 points there. That's provisional, of course. We'll give you the official results as they come to hand, but it looks like a win for the Maulers, 150 to 45 for the Ali Cats. Brilliant way for the Maulers to start off for the 2024 Peter Barry Memorial Teams campaign.
Hey, Mike, can you hear me up there?
Sure can.
Oh, good. I'm actually down here, right down the end of the pit. So I'm down here with Hayden Barker actually, who was the winner for that, the Gisborne Gladiators race. Hayden, that was a great win. The cars took a little bit of damage though. Can you talk us through that?
Uh, yeah, a few cars took some damage there. Boys will get it fixed up for the next one. We had a pretty simple plan going into that. Lot of new drivers for us. So yeah, simple plan, executed it and come away with a win.
How good was this driver over here, the 71G? He took some severe front suspension damage, but he just made a nuisance of himself and put his hand up and said, everybody stop me if you can. And they actually couldn't.
And that, and that's what it's about too. He knew that even with a damaged car, he still had a job to do and switched his roles and done his job. So yeah.
Oh, and that's what it's all about. Sorry, sorry. We have an Ali Cat who has lost his steering and nearly took us all out. At least he's dedicated to the cause, right? But hey, you've also, hang on, sorry, Amron, I'm just going to pick you up. You've also taken away the Rees Shield for the weekend. So you maintain that for the, the next season, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, it'll come back to Gisborne now. Go back to Gisborne and I think first meeting next year, we'll put it up at the first race, depending where that is and when that is. So yeah.
Now, I have had the privilege of being to the Gisborne track quite a few times. And I know that Gisborne, the Gisborne track look after its drivers like nobody else does in the country. Can you tell us, do you think they're all watching at home?
Oh, hopefully they are. A lot of racing tonight. Gisborne's running tonight, tomorrow night. And so yeah, some will be watching, probably some won't. They'll see later on.
Well, if anybody is watching from the Gisborne track, we thank you for tuning in because it means a lot for this team to be here. They've come along, oh, I mean, it's not a long way, but it's a horrible road. They've come a long way to get the job done and that's what they've certainly done for Gisborne.
Awesome. Thank you.
Now, I've actually had word, would you believe, I think he said that 5R car has a broken back suspension. I can't confirm that because I'm so short I can't see over the fence. However, our cameraman's going to get onto it really quickly because here come, actually, there's not many people here to jump over the fence. If I'm being fair, I might have to go and try and fix it myself.
I'm sure they'll come a-running.
I think they are, here they come. Yeah, here they come now. They're men on a mission. I don't know if Amron can get them all behind me, but they're running all right. The only happy man in the whole crowd is Alan Levine and I wonder why.
Yeah, I bet he is.
Look at him. Look at him. Oh, he's a tacky, isn't he? Here he goes. Open the letter, open the letter.
So that double, that 55R car there of Dan Holland that's parked up for the three minute bell, he's under his triple 5R on the live timing, but it's 55 on the car. So again, we've got just about everybody down here for this three minute bell. The 5R car just headed infield. Henderson, he definitely wasn't up to race pace in the hot laps.
We have a very concerned looking Samuel Ashton down here as well. He's not looking happy. He's running too. They're all running. Gosh, this is making him down here at the minute. Which, I mean, it's Teams Racing through and through, right? I can actually say that the Rotarua team was here and lined up on the dummy grid as soon as the previous, the previous race was out. So they're one very focused, determined team. So I'm actually surprised to see all of this work going on in their cars right now.
Yeah, well, the, you know, perfectionists. Everybody needs to have a good start in that first round. The last thing you want is to come away with 30 or 40 points out of the first round because you're really on the back foot and it's an uphill battle. Everyone wants to make sure these cars are dialed in.
Absolutely. And I guess that's why they've come away with the Teams Nationals title, eh?
Absolutely. And that's a reputation that you have to keep building on, you know? Everybody wants to defeat the New Zealand champions and they're only just recently crowned. So the rascals are riding on a high, but everybody else wants to bring them down to earth.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think if there's one team that can do it, here we go, Wellington's on.
Yeah, I agree with you there Bianca. Yeah, I agree with you there, Bianca.
I just want to make note that Alan Levine was the only person I've seen tonight that actually used a ladder to get over the fence.
Well, he is getting on a bit now, isn't he? But I'll tell you what, he's always got a smile on his face.
His, I bet you his wife Sue, if she's not here, she's probably watching from home going, you keep going, Bianca, you give him as much grief as you can.
That's an impressive transporter that they came in on as well.
I wonder if I could get a ride home with them, eh? Probably not, they're probably full, but it's very, very impressive. I actually think that came from down south, too.
Bianca, you could hide in that and they wouldn't even know you were there for two weeks.
You know what? I could actually jump in Ethan's car on the way down. They would have no clue I'm enjoying myself in the back of the truck.
One of the guys you see out there in the infield there was Regan O'Brien. Now, he's won this championship with the Maulers before and normally driving the superstock. And he's doing a great job out there working as part of the trackside crew.
This three-minute is definitely coming down to the wire, isn't it, Mike?
Yeah, it is because we've just got 20 seconds remaining.
I think we have all sorts of panic about to erupt right now.
Yeah, well, Davy Jones is there probably conversing with the referee, saying, hey, time's running out, we're going to count down, eight, seven, six, five, it's just about done. Everybody's got to be able to drive away. So you can see the crossed arms there. Davy Jones, clerk of the course, says three-minute bell is over. If you're still working on your cars, time is up. You're probably going to go infield and then we'll wait and see who he releases. It's going to be interesting to see who drives away from this because the 55R car definitely was released off the tow truck after that three-minute bell. Anxious drivers here wanting to go to their grid. Young Guns will go from the inside on one. Rascals on two.
Hey, so, what's your name?
Brett Henderson.
Brett Henderson, you must be Deon's dad. Tell us what was wrong with the car?
Um, the top of the adjuster for the shock absorber has blown off, and so then the whole car's fallen down.
Okay, so we came really, really close to that three-minute bell. Can you tell us if he's able to race or not? Is he done?
Uh, no, I don't think he's allowed to. I think we've gone over the three-minute bell, haven't we?
I believe you did. You were right on it. I don't know, the clerk has released him, but I don't think, but he could be up to race in the next race because you've got it fixed?
Definitely.
Awesome. Well, there you go, guys. It was the quickest update in the history of updates.
You know, you can make sure in the race shed that prep is done and that cars are 100%. Motorsport's motorsport. You can go out and you can do a lap and you can break something. It's just part of motorsport as a whole, and things happen. And unfortunately, it's happened for them at a crucial time.
And Mike, how, I mean, that just makes a night a lot more interesting, doesn't it? Because every single member of these two teams and every team here actually have a job to do. So when something like that happens and you're a crucial member of the team, these guys will be out here now, they cannot communicate with each other, they'll be trying to, look, here we go, they're coming out on the grid, but they will be trying to readjust that plan. They'll go Plan A, Plan B, probably Plan C, right down to Plan F maybe. But I tell you, this is going to be an epic race. Just a quick note, this water track, Emmeron and I are trying to go and get a ride in it later on tonight, so we might be able to bring you some laps from the actual track. How exciting is that?
You get all the good jobs, Bianca.
Sometimes I do.
So it's the 10 car that will go from the inside for the Young Guns. Ben Ellis, former national champion. The 51, 513, Callum Flavell, the three-time winner for the Rascals on the outside on Looks like the, pick up the one, trying to pick up the number there, 144, for the Rascals will go from three with the 6W of Gaskin on the outside on four. Then it's the 31, 21, sorry, Tim Parker, who goes from five. With grid six for the 91 of Coxhead for the Rascals. Then that final row, we will see the 5 car of Deon Henderson. And on the outside on grid eight, the 46 of Levine. That's how they stack them up. Rascals versus Young Guns. Teams race number four. Napier City Council, Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams. This will be a tough teams' race. Little bit of movement, then they put the greens in. Already Levine into reverse. He wanted to get by on that outside row with three cars still stopped there. 144 takes over the race lead. Paddle for the Rascals out in front. Made a nice tap and run pass with the 10 car of Ben Ellis in second place. Then some block work here by the 5R of Henderson. The 21 spins himself out, Tim Parker, just in front of his teammate Levine. And Levine goes into damage mode and puts the 51. The 10 car having to redress. Ben Ellis has to go back to the infield to turn around. The 144 car is your race leader. Paddle for the Rascals out in front. 5R of Deon Henderson in second place, so it's Rascals running one and two. Third car on the track is the 10 of Ellis for the Young Guns. The Young Guns need to turn this around. They've still got seven laps to do it. One of the Rascals pinned up against the wall by Levine, but Levine, a vital member of the Young Guns, needs to be on this racetrack. Waiting, the 6 car. Gaskin, sitting down here on turn three, waiting for the race leader. Steve Paddle to come around the outside. Paddle switches his attack back to the inside. Gaskin gets on the breakdown into one, slows up the race leader. Henderson in the 5R car is right there as well. Henderson slides up the inside, takes over the race lead. And back through for second place, the 144R. In chase, the 10 of Ben Ellis, Young Guns driver. They have to do something here because, well, the Rotorua team have got three drivers in the top five. 91R, Tony Coxhead, sits there in fifth position. Only four cars in race pace. Redress up the top turn for, I think, the 10. And again, the 6W of Gaskin's doing some great block work, although he got taken to the grass that time. Ellis sandwiched by the two Rascals. And Ellis will get on the brake as he sees the 144R in the mirrors. Young Guns starting to get some momentum going. Big hit up in the turn number two. Ellis got taken in hard. Paddle in the 144 was your race leader. And now the 5R Henderson is under attack from two Young Guns drivers and gets spun on the main straight. It's now the 21W of Parker who's gone through to take the lead. The Young Guns have turned it around. 21, your race leader, just comes past the commentary position. Keep an eye on Levine in the 46. He's going to go into block mode on the 5R of Henderson. Henderson currently second on the track. Levine couldn't quite squeeze him to the pole, pins him up against the fence just before the start-finish. One lap to go. And great block work there by the Rascals driver, just parks up casually. Here's your checker. Parker's going to take the 100 points. Well, from the depths of despair to taking the major points for the 21W of Parker, Young Guns showing how you turn it around. The race still live. 5R Deon Henderson has crossed in second. Ellis back out on the racetrack as well. He will come in under the flag. So unofficially, 21W Parker for the win. 5R Deon Henderson, second. 10W Ben Ellis, third. 91R Tony Coxhead, fourth. 6W Paul Gaskin, fifth. 46W Ethan Levine, final finisher in sixth. So that would give a provisional at the moment of 110 points to 85 to the Young Guns. Well, from the very beginning there, it was certainly the Rascals that were in command of that. Levine, long time pinned up against the fence there on the main straight, was finally able to get away and score some points. Well, possibly score some points, looking up at the scoreboard, which has changed on us again. And the Young Guns really found the right key to unlock the cell and go through to take that and get the win. Keeping them in contention, 100 points plus out of that first round. They can't be too disappointed with that, especially over the Rascals, the current New Zealand champions.
Bad news, we've just got a couple of spits of rain, but listen, we're not going to look skyward. I'm actually down here with Bryce. Bryce, I mean, the look on your face says everything. You got disqualified from your race. Apparently it was attacking across the pole line. How do you feel about that?
Yeah, obviously gutted for the boys, you know? We don't intentionally mean to do it. It's just one of those moments where you're just like, you've got to get them, you've got to get them, you know, clear your way out. But obviously a backfired and we, boys got to win and congratulations on their win, but hay onwards and upwards.
It's sometimes just a moment of should I, shouldn't I, it happens so quick. You kind of zagged, but you should have zagged. And it's a gamble that didn't pay off, but sometimes it does. But unfortunately tonight, it just, they pinged you and it was literally straight away. Those reds came on. When the reds came on, though, did you actually know that they were stopping because of you?
Yeah, I had a feeling it was because of me. Because I knew that I was close to the pole line, but I didn't realise I went over it, you know? And it's hard because the pole line's pretty much the same colour as the track, so. But hey, lesson learnt, don't do it again.
And not only to add salt to the wound, you got disqualified and fined.
Yeah, it is what it is, you know? You know the penalties when you come in doing this kind of stuff, whether you risk it or you don't, you know?
I can almost guarantee, though, Bryce, that you were never going to make that mistake again?
No, never, you know? Don't want to let the boys down again.
Hey, listen, tell us, we do have a little bit of work going on in the background here. Can you tell us what damage, for the very short amount of time that you were on the track, but you did give a really good hit? Is this where the damage has come from or can you explain what's going on here?
Yeah, it was when I went out by the wall and I got taken out. It just, all it did was just bend the shock, so it's not too bad. Just bolt another one on and off we go again.
I noticed that Blake, oh, sorry, Blake Brooks sat that race out. That was a huge decision. Do you think he'll be in in the next one?
Yeah, hopefully. I hope, I hope so. We'd need to put our A-team together, you know? Like, don't get me wrong, we've got all good cars, but obviously the better cars we can get out there to try and accumulate some points and get the wins, you know? So, yeah, hopefully.
Listen, I absolutely, I think you're a great guy. I can absolutely tell that you're devastated with what's happened. I'm going to let you go gather your thoughts, ring who you need to ring, focus how you need to do it, but we do wish you luck in the next race. I picked you guys to win, so you better pull your finger out.
We'll try our damned best to.
Ah, there you go, there's a smile. Good luck for the rest of the night.
Cheers, thank you.
Awesome, cheers. Listen, we thought we'd come down and speak to some of these Auckland drivers, but they're actually nowhere to be found. Blake Brooks, I'm not sure where he is. But we do have the cars on the track, so I'll cut back over to you guys and see if I can go and catch up with some of these, some of these Young Guns.
Thanks, Bianca. I'd really like to know what that, how much that fine was as well for that infringement.
Give me one second, I'll ask him. I'm still down here. Bryce, really quickly, can you tell us how much that fine was?
A $100 fine.
$100, there we go, Mike.
All right, thanks, Bianca. 361, Clinton Cheatham will be there as well for the Raiders. A lot less cars in front of the bell this time. And the three-minute bell has just been started. Crew's real quick to jump over that fence. Love the fact that they have got colour-coordinated buckets. How's that? If you can see the crew member on the left-hand side of Cheatham's car, when he comes back, you'll see that he's got the three colours on the bucket there. It is right there, if you can, if anyone can see that.
There's probably going to be one really nervous driver here. Hadley Dixon, of course, has driven in this Huntly team as well, so, oh, gosh, they're all coming, screaming for a hammer. I don't know what that's for, but he'll be quite nervous right now, I can imagine, sitting out there watching as the previous team that he used to race for is wanting to take him to the fence, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah. Talking about the hammy run knows a motorsport, if you can't fix it, bash it.
Yeah, it sounds like my computer and my laptop at home.
Two minutes to go. Looks like left front adjustments being made there for the 915 of Hadley Dixon.
Hey, I've got Brad Philpott down here. Brad Philpott, such a shame to not see you in the car, but talk us through some of the adjustments that you've made on the cars out here.
Um, our young Hamish here, we just adjusted his bouts and sorted out his GoPro. Clinton, he had adjustment on the shocks and, yeah, no, the boys are pretty much ready, just a slight tweak and away we should go. So it's quite good to come up against the Bulldogs. We've got a few guys in there that used to be part of Huntly and it's just a bit of rivalry.
Friendly rivalry, of course. I'm sure when they all meet in the shed later on, they'll shake each other's hand and have a bit of a laugh together.
Oh, yeah, 100%. Few bears will go around and we'll forget about it tonight and start again tomorrow.
Maybe tomorrow, not tonight. I've seen some of these guys hold a grudge and do it, carry it on, especially you're one of them. No, I'm joking, you're the one of the nice guys. But listen, they're doing a great job. You're doing a great job. This has actually been a great meeting so far.
Yeah, 100%. We just thought we'll give Hutch a run and he needs the experience this season, so it'd stand out and we'll go from there. But nah, jokes aside, we should be a good, good crew of guys and two teams can't beat it.
All right, well, they're about to close this gate. That looks like three minutes is up. Thanks for your words, Brad.
Yeah, just on 40 seconds to go. We love grudges in teams racing, though, Bianca, because drama is what we feed off up here in the box and as presenters. And, you know, we like it when there's a bit of on-track rivalry, just adds that bit of extra spice.
Oh, listen, we wouldn't be anywhere if we don't have that track rivalry. You have track rivalries, you have personal rivalries. When it's out on the track, it's kept out on the track, but it's nice to see, like I said and Brad said, yeah, they all shake their hands, have a beer afterwards because nobody actually, you know, you can hold all the grudges you like, but nobody actually wants to hurt somebody here.
No, absolutely right, 100%. So the Raiders will start from the inside on one with the Bulldogs going from two. And first car up to the line will be the 31 of Chloe Ingram for the Bulldogs. And they are really going to squeeze the Raiders down tight on this start. No one else too keen just to make their way to that grid just yet. Ingram has it all to herself at the moment. And it looks like the 16H of James Marshall, who will go from grid position number one for the Raiders, yellow. Grid three for the Bulldogs, that will be filled by the 6 of Mortimer. Coming into grid position number four for the Raiders, the 32 of Jaden Dreading Manning. Grid five. Uh, grid six already there, so grid five, the 27 for the Raiders of Brett Aiken. And that'll be the 55 of Zayden Slater, that will go from grid position six. Seven is the 26 of Bryce Carter, and the seven of Hamish White will fill out the grid on Really squeezing the Raiders down close to the pole line on this start. Immediately the outside row explodes off the line. And it's the 31, Chloe Ingram for the Bulldogs out in front. Raiders giving chase in the big move down the inside at turn number three. Well, that could have been hard, but the 16 car rode up over the top. James Marshall, though, puts Ingram in the fence at turn two, three, taking over the race lead. Taking over the race lead. It's Bulldogs still leading. 55 of Zayden Slater. The 26 car, Bryce Carter for the Bulldogs spins on turn four, hits reverse. Lights it up on the grass and is back in this team's race. 55 Slater for the Bulldogs as the race leader from the 32. Jaden Dreading Manning in second place. Keep an eye on the back straight here, we've got a chain gang going on. And that was in behind the 16 of Marshall. Pretty impressive when you can block three other cars behind you, 55 race leaders, Zayden Slater slips by on the inside. Keep an eye on turn one. Big move up there at turn number one, but Slater is up to the task, clamped it on the pole but gets spun and the Raiders take the race lead. Nice work by the 32 of Dreading Manning. 27 in second place, I think Aiken, well he might be a few laps down, let's keep an eye on that second spot. It is the 31 of Chloe Ingram for the Bulldogs. There's a block up the top turn, Raiders pinning one of the Bulldogs to the fence. So Dreading Manning in the 32 has got a shotgun teammate running in behind. That's the 27 of Aiken. 26 car of Bryce Carter tries to take, well he does in fact, takes the seven car of Hamish White to the wall. It's still the 31 Ingram back in front for the Bulldogs. It's going back and forth this race. 27 car coming in hot, Aiken, wow, he takes himself to the pole line. The 31 hits one of his teammates. And Ingram is still the race leader, but that lead is shrinking rapidly now as the 32 car of Dreading Manning comes back into it. Keep an eye on this down at one, oh! Well, that might be a contentious issue right there if you saw that. There's going to be something said about that I'm sure after this team's race, already the arms are up in the air and we go red, someone's coming off. Well, there's a clear cut case of attacking across the pole line. Going to have a look on a replay there, look at that, doesn't get any clearer than that. And all four wheels. It's good to see the Raiders fans down here still laughing and look at that, that was an interesting hit.
They certainly weren't laughing where I was sitting here, Mike, I think I might just scurry along.
No, you've just corrected, they're Gladiators fans. Hey, we're about to go green, let's go racing once again. The cowbell's sounding. Looks like the 31 of Ingram has gone as well for perhaps seeking sanctuary on the infield. 55's been taken to the grass, Zayden Slater. White flag is out, we're on the final lap of an interesting teams race between the Raiders and the Bulldogs. As they come down the back straight, it's looking good for the 32 car. Jaden Dreading Manning is going to take the hundred points at least for the Raiders yellow. And it is still all action on the back straight, the 55 Slater, how many times has he gone round? Keep an eye on the seven of Hamish White back on the track. Trying to come in under the flag, the 26 car from the Bulldogs, Bryce Carter's going to try and pin him to the wall, gets put in himself. Cross the stripe, two more cars. I think we could be, are we done? Just waiting for the seven car to come round, but that 26 car's still on the track trying to find reverse. 16 has gone to the grass. Still green. Still got the 55 car at speed. And caution's on now. 32 Jaden Dreading Manning for the Waikato Raiders unofficially with the win, 27 Raiders car Brett Aiken second. 55 M Zayden Slater third, 16 Raiders driver James Marshall will finish up fourth and provisionally seven Raiders car, Hamish White for fifth. Looks like a one-sided victory going to the Raiders in that one, but we'll wait and see for that provisional result and the official result. But as it is at the moment, it looks like 170 to 25 for the Waikato Raiders yellow. So just at the moment surmising that the 31 M car of Ingram was sent infield for seeking sanctuary over the pole line.
Oh, it's definitely all happening tonight, but listen, I'm down here with Tim Parker. Tim, congratulations, that was a great win by Wellington.
Yeah, thank you, nah, it was pretty good to get a win under the belt and yeah, focusing on this next one that way.
Absolutely, and how good is it though, old 6W PG, Paul Gaskin for those who don't know who PG is, I'm surprised they wouldn't know. Amazing blocking in that race, he really, really stood up and said, listen, you're not going to win, you can't get past me.
Yeah, nah, he did bloody awesome eh, and yeah, it's good he's stopping the lead cars and then I ended up getting old Henderson, so spun him up and then back to the lead and yeah, the boys are doing a good job.
There was a lot of toing and froing, but I'm going to be really, really honest here and it might be a very unpopular opinion, but I actually thought that Rotorua were going to come out a lot harder than what they actually did.
Yeah, yeah, well, everyone probably thought that, but you know, racing and yeah.
Good on you though, because they're the, like, we keep getting reminded where they are, oh look, we've got a camera in our face now. They are the national teams, I hear your mic, sorry, I did hear that, I just had a message in my ear. They are the national team champions at the minute, so it was going to take a lot to beat them, but you guys actually did it very convincingly.
Yeah, yeah, well, you've got to beat the best to be the best, so we've done that, so hopefully we go win this next one and then yeah, get all ready for tomorrow.
Ben Ellis was another key performer in this team, he just ran and ran and ran, keep you safe, snuggled in behind you and you guys just kind of took off and Rotorua almost just clearly left you to it.
Yeah, yeah, so I only hit a car twice and that was it really, it just left me alone and then I, it's been smart, so yeah, it's good.
Tell us, you said that you've got to focus for your next one, what is your main focus? You've got a lot of to's and fro's here, you've got a few extra drivers and what have you, so I don't want to ask any of your game plan, but what's your main focus for the next race?
Uh, sort of just the same as the last one, just go and do what we've got to do and yeah, that's really it.
That wasn't a tough teams race in terms of damage for the cars, can you talk us through if any damage that these, that your teammates have?
Nah, I don't actually know, I haven't really looked.
I know, because do you know what, I've been chasing you around the pits, you're up there and you're back here, so, okay, well that's fair, but it looks pretty relaxed down here, if there was anyone that would be rushing around due to any damage, it would definitely be Alan Levine and he's got a big smile on his face, he's actually taking a seat in the back of the truck.
Yeah, yeah, he's pretty chilled out in that moment, but yeah, all the cars are semi, semi-ready, so yeah.
Look, we've got a lot of racing to get through for the rest of the night, like you say, you need to go and focus, I'm going to let you go and do that, good luck for the rest of the evening.
Sweet as fuck, you.
Right, cheers, thanks Tim.
It's action for the whole family, with 23 tracks around New Zealand, there is no better way to spend your weekends than at a Speedway New Zealand track. There's something for the whole family, sprint cars, saloons, stock cars, sidecars, midgets and much, much more. Pack up the family and make a trip to adrenaline-filled, action-packed bashes and crashes that only Speedway can deliver. Visit www.speedway.co.nz to find out the track nearest to you. Speedway, it's our summer thing. The St Nicholas is a familiar sight around Bluff as she steams out to capture Candu Fishing's famous Bluff Kinner. Once caught, the kinner is brought back to the purpose-built factory in Bluff where it is processed, packed and shipped fresh to you. But that's not all that Candu Fishing can do for you, try some of their green bone fish or delicious power products. And you will soon see why seafood from the Bluff is world famous. So head to your local fish market or supermarket and ask for Candu Fishing Kinner, Fish or Power. Candu Fishing, there's nothing we can't do for you.
Are you building a new commercial business or home? Or is it time that your existing premises had to repaint anywhere in the South Island? Then Anderton Decorators have you covered. From floor to ceiling, board to roof, Anderton Decorators offer the latest techniques, equipment and technology to make even the hardest tasks seem simple. Anderton Decorators also has the expert team to take the frustration out of your next project. Call Shane today on 027 Paint In, it's 027 724 6846. Anderton Decorators, we have you covered.
Roughies will take grid position one, they'll go from the inside with the Waikato Raiders in red on two. They'll want to do what the yellow team just did in their previous race. Try and take away the major share of those points. For the Raiders red, the eight is Larry Henderson, thirteen of Jamie Simons, sixty-seven Michael Rowe, eighty-eight Justin Hutchby, ninety-seven Casey Cheatham and the ninety-nine of William White with their team manager, Justin Hutchby. Thanks to 007 Paintball for the fire crew vehicle. Don't forget, take advantage of the food stalls around the track, you might want coffee as well. Caffeine and Chills doing a great job over there, I just want a little bag of Dunkin' Donuts as well, go and see the Little Orbit skies. And tomorrow, you're milling around in Hastings, you want something to do, you can go and check out the indoor market at the Hastings Sports Stadium and Railway Road and that is where you'll find our Sweet Snacks Edens crew. And we're going to give away one of their prize packs tomorrow night as well. They make really, really nice kind of ice biscuits and stuff and some of them are even Speedway themed. And that's happening at the Railway Road Indoor Sports Stadium tomorrow, nine till two.
Hey Mike, I'm not sure if you can see what's happening at the minute down in the shed, we've actually got a couple of drivers on our screen at the minute. They're actually down here having their safety check, like I keep talking about, everybody probably wonders what happens. We've actually got them down here and they're asked things like what's the date, they're asked to remember a letter, what track they're at, why they're here racing. The questions may seem really, really simple, but that's a really, really good indication if they've got a knock to the head. Every single driver after every race has to come down here immediately and actually do these checks. And if there's any concerns whatsoever, they're taken next door to the ambulance and the ambulance, the ambulance staff check them over. So it's great to see that these drivers are well cared for by these Miyani staff members here.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's called a cognitive test, is that right?
Yeah, I believe so, I couldn't actually get that out because I didn't know the proper name, but Mike, you sound like you're about right there.
Well, I'll tell you what, it's a test that I could fail without a knock to the head anyway.
Well, yeah, she asked what the date was and the poor driver said, I don't know, and I couldn't help him because to be fair, I have no clue what the date is either.
Well, it's easy for a Speedway person to forget that it's Friday night and not a Saturday.
Absolutely, and it might sound, like I say, really trivial and basic questions, but it's a really, really good indication of that they're actually aware of where they are, what they're here for and what they've been doing.
Absolutely, I'll tell you what, this Raiders red team looking pretty good out on the racetrack with their hot laps. Roughies just patiently waiting. So we've got the ninety-nine of William White, the eight Larry Henderson and the ninety-seven of Casey Cheatham. Now, when you have a look through the programme, it actually says that Casey Cheatham is a young lady, but I can assure you, he is not. So just a little typo in that programme. Maybe that could be one of my commentator questions tomorrow night. Some great prizes to give away tomorrow, we've got some apparel as well, we'll squeeze all those into the meeting as well. Providing we get time of course, it's going to be a busy night tomorrow, really, really looking forward to the tier one semi-finals and the tier two ones as well to determine fifth through to eighth. And looking forward to giving away that Randy T front visor. Would actually look really good in my man cave. That's if my wife let me have a man cave. No such luck.
Hey Mike, you're probably one of the most knowledgeable people in Speedway that I know.
You don't know many people then, do you?
Stop it, hey Mike, I'm really keen to know, the Orange Roughies have already, you know, had a race and they're out there just waiting for this team to do their three minute bell. If one of the Orange Roughies cars had an issue, could they come and join this three minute bell? Or because they've already utilised it in their first round, do they just have to suck it up and stay on the infield?
No, absolutely, I'm pretty sure that they can come and use that three minute bell. It is for both teams, just because they've had one, there's one every teams race, this is another teams race, effectively it's a new three minute bell.
Hmm, interesting, now I know, I feel much better.
Well, Bill Clarkson will come and correct me if I'm wrong on that. The Roughies really need to pull out something special here, they've got 65 points from round one. Going to need at least, I think, 140, at least. It's hard to work out points as to what that permutation will be, we'll know a little bit further on through this second round, where effectively we're sort of really in halfway mode. So Raiders red, driving away from the three minute bell area. Roughies from the inside on one. Raiders red will go from two. First car up to the line, the eight of Larry Henderson from grid position two. Looks like the eighty-six Bradley Singer will go from grid one for the Roughies. The young boy who used to dream of racing in this meeting. If only we had a photo of him sitting on his bear crate inside that team's body that we could have put in the programme. So waiting for the second row, looks like Roughies driver Daniel Melling is going to slot in there on grid position four. And assuming there, the ninety-seven of Casey Cheatham for the Raiders will go from three. We can already see the thirteen of Simons for the Raiders on grid position six. And it's the sixty-five of Royden Heim that will go from grid five for the Roughies with the ninety-nine of William White, grid seven for the Raiders. And the final row slotting in there, the twenty-seven of Isaac Fothergill for the Roughies on grid position number eight, they're locked and loaded. First time on track for Raiders red, second time for the Roughies, go time now for the Roughies if they want to try and make that tier one semi-final. Oh movement, let's go racing. Raiders trying to go around the outside, that's the dangerous way to go with a Roughies driver on the inside of you. And Singer takes the eight car of Henderson to the wall, oh, we've got one there first rollover, up and over. I think that was the twenty-four, that is the twenty-four, Daniel Melling, up and over and gone from the second teams race. By the ninety-nine Raiders driver William White. Well, it was a slow rollover, there shouldn't be too much damage. Melling only, well, not even half a lap into the second teams race, so already them all as a car down. They did not need that.
Hey, so I'm just going to interrupt for a minute Mike, I'm having a bit of a laugh to myself because I've got someone down here looking extremely nervous to speak to me. Jason Gutteridge himself, Jase, you've never been to Miyani before, well, in terms of filming, how's it all going tonight? Can you explain to us, are we in a good mood or are we in a bad mood?
No, no, not good mood, no, the team have got it well and truly sorted out, it's got a wee glitch with the graphics, seemingly it doesn't talk very well to our system, so we're not really in a position to get it fixed up right now, but we'll get it fixed up within the next, you know, couple of hours or tomorrow. So, but nah, the stream's mint, so I can't complain, good numbers. So thanks to all those people that supported the club and bought the stream, the club are very happy with what the numbers are tonight. And obviously there's not much else happening around, mind you, Shortland Street's getting pretty good at the moment, I should have been watching there.
Oh, listen, I think we're going to have to console Jason, he's waiting on tender hooks to see if Shortland Street's going to be cancelled. He thinks it's safe, but golly me, I think it's time to go, but anyway, Jase, listen, how are you finding the racing? I know you're a true fan. I know you're a true fan of teams racing. You can't beat it, right?
No, it's really good, but unfortunately, I've been busy trying to get everything a hundred percent right. Once you've already alluded to, we've never been here before. So we needed to make sure everything's a hundred percent, like everything's running through us, Mike. Everybody, everybody's talking to everybody. You can see it's really good for, you know. So yeah, it's about communication and getting as much information as we can out there and talking to as many people as we can apart from me.
Well, I was on a red light. I was like, God, who am I going to speak to? And there you appeared like an angel.
Absolutely. All right, now I'm going to go. Bye.
Okay, listen, go away now, Jason. Thank you. Listen, he doesn't know, but the amazing James Buckroll has actually left us very quietly two massive boxes of muffins. I've actually hidden them so the team don't know that I've got them. So Jason, of course, he's not allowed them apparently. I think we can, we, Michaela, Michaela can't talk to anyone at home, but Michaela and I are going to hide them and have a midnight feast. I think we really deserve it. Mike, I think you're doing a great job up there too. You might need to come and join us.
Yeah, you've got all the fun stuff down there talking to everybody. Hey, you won't be able to hide those muffins though because Booker heard that. He knows.
Oh, I'll fight Booker. I'll fight you Booker. You're not having, no, honestly, I will share them around. But what I probably wanted to allude to was just the hospitality that we've had from the track so far. It's absolutely amazing and it feels like we're at home already.
I think I'll claim ten.
Ten? I heard you were good for twenty.
You're going to get half Booker.
We'll see who can eat the quickest, Mike.
We're going to ration them.
Fitz TV Eating Contest. Let's do it. Right, so we see the twenty-four car Melling. Twenty-four car Melling goes to the infield. As I say, shouldn't be too much damage, but these drivers sitting here patiently, they want to get going. They will want to get back into this team's race. They're in the zone. And already Maulers going a car, sorry, the Ruffies going a car down and they do not need that right now.
Mike, I don't know if you can see me. I'm right under, oh no, I'll talk to you later. We're off.
Here we go. Eighty-six Bradley Singer. Will he be your race leader? Oh, we're going back red. Have we got a car that didn't restart? Eight H Larry Henderson. Oh, he's going. So we're level pegging again. It is one car down for each team. Not sure what the issue here is for Henderson. Just did not move on that restart. Looked like it might have been stuck in gear then when the tow truck tried to push him off. Not able to select neutral. One of the people I saw down on the track there just helping out, drive shaft.
Drive shaft, Alan Sang, yeah.
Thank you, Alan Levine.
Alan, I think we need to give you a mic. Come up here, Alan. No, he says no.
So drive shaft issue there for Henderson. I was just going to say that one of the other people I saw down on the infield helping out and working with the tow truck crew is Craig Bowler, the North Island Sidecar Champion. So it just shows you how much people get involved in this sport. Yeah, they go and race their own class, but then they come and help out their club. Recovery vehicles heading infield. Shouldn't be too far away from a restart. With just the six cars on the track. Greens are on. Royden Hind for the Ruffies credited as the race leader on lap one. Hind has Bradley Singer running shotgun. And then the twenty-seven of Fothergill should pick it up as well. Second place Singer, Ruffies running one and two. Third place for the Raiders red, ninety-seven Casey Cheatham. Keeping on the thirteen of Jamie Simons. Simons will look to turn right on Hind coming off turn number four. Hind slots up in behind. Round the outside goes Singer. Sparks are flying. Hind takes the thirteen car of Simons to the infield. Still got the twenty-seven car, Fothergill. Not up to race pace, but just trolling the pole line for the Ruffies. Looking to pick up the ninety-seven car now of Casey Cheatham. Cheatham storming around the outside. Drops back and gives the twenty-seven of Fothergill a huge serve across the start-finish. Pirouettes the twenty-seven car. Eighty-six Singer, still the race leader. As Royden Hind attacks the thirteen of Simons. Simons tries to put the bumper on to the eighty-six of Singer. Singer gets by on the outside. He's a lap ahead of the field in the eighty-six car for the Ruffies. They need more than this. They're only got the race leader in fourth place. They need the other two minor places as well to have any chance, I think, of a tier one semi. Still the thirteen car of Simons pinning one of the Ruffies cars. I think it's the sixty-five of Hind. As Singer continues on with four laps to go. Royden Hind needs to get back into this team's race. They both redress the situation up there at turn one and two. Three laps to go for Singer. Still ninety-seven Casey Cheatham in second place for Raiders red. Singer turns down on one of the Raiders drivers. Don't know if that was the smartest move. And now the Raiders are going after the Ruffies. The twenty-seven of Fothergill turned around again. Royden Hind chasing this ninety-seven of Cheatham. Cheatham now, I think, will be your race leader. And it's changed about. Cheatham for Raiders red has gone into the lead. Singer tries to get around the outside of the ninety-nine. They both go to the grass. Will have to redress that situation. And Casey Cheatham will get the white flag. Raiders red with one lap to go. Who is there to stop them? Only the twenty-seven of Isaac Fothergill up there on turn number two. Fothergill on the brakes in the mirrors. Holding up the ninety-seven. Cheatham slips by on the inside. Fothergill spins again. Hard hit. Oh. Raiders red take the win. And it's still going on. And it's a naked run to the line. Wow. Ninety-seven H Casey Cheatham, turning defeat into victory. Takes the race for the Raiders red. Eighty-six Bradley Singer for the Ruffies picking up second place. Ninety-nine for Raiders red, William White will finish third. Twenty-seven, Ruffies driver Isaac Fothergill definitely in the wars and that one was fourth. Sixty-five, Ruffies driver Royden Hind was fifth. And the thirteen Raiders red driver, Jamie Simons picking up sixth place. And a provisional, provisional points total for Raiders red, one twenty-five to seventy. So as I say, that is a provisional. So after every team has completed a race, apart from Raiders red being a provisional result, we can confirm that Raiders yellow are current round one leaders with a hundred and seventy points. The Gisborne Gladiators on one fifty-five. Miyani Maulers, third with one fifty. Wellington Young Guns currently sit fourth with one thirty-five. Wonganui Vulcans in fifth place with a hundred and thirty. Though the Orange Ruffies, if they did get seventy, will be on a hundred and thirty-five. So that would actually, yeah, a hundred and thirty-five after two rounds. So that is their total from their two qualifying teams races. Currently in seventh place, the Rascals with sixty. Auckland Alley Cats sitting down there on eighth position with forty-five. Stratford Stormers have forty and Bay Park Bulldogs just twenty-five points. So some big teams with a lot to do in the second round. As we will move on to team's race number seven. And that'll be a matchup between the Wonganui Vulcans currently on one thirty and the Stratford Stormers on forty points.
Hey, g'day. We're down here with one of the Drosch on the Waikato team. That was a good win in that one, mate.
Yeah, it's good to get a win under our belt, especially early on. So kind of gives us a good run into the next one. The boys have got all confidence. Cars have been mangled, but we'll get out there, you know, it's teams. We'll do it.
It's part of the spirit of teams in it, mate. You go out there, you bang it up, you get it ready for the next race.
Yeah, hell yeah. Everyone gets involved. So, nah, we'll get out there. We'll hopefully be a tough battle in the next one, but we'll try, we'll try.
Mate, you just keep going, going, going. It's never give up with this team.
Yeah, it's definitely that. You've just got to keep going a hundred percent all the time. Can't have a little bit of a mishap happen because that's when stuff goes bad. So nah.
I'm up there and I can't stop hearing those bloody bells, mate.
Nah, it's good. I can't hear them in the car, so they need to ring them louder. So.
I think they all see me now after the other night. They all want me to, oh, you see me and just ring a bell at me.
Yeah, it's all part of the photo. Everyone gets in behind it. So, yeah. I can't hear the cowbells, people, come on.
We'll hear them more. Oh, there we go. Look at that. That happened, didn't it, on the back there? Mate, the team really is gelling well. How was the trip down though today?
Oh, the, the, you kind of got a bit hot. The brakes were a bit stucky. So nah, it's good. Everyone kind of enjoyed it. It was real wet. So we kind of got here and we're like, right, it's kind of a miracle, man. It's bloody sunny. It's always sunny in Hawkes Bay, eh?
Mate, what was I saying? What have I been saying, eh? It's always sunny in the Hawkes Bay. I never doubted you. The New Zealand Supers was just an anomaly, mate. It didn't really happen.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Hey, look, I'm glad you guys are enjoying yourselves. You look like you're doing well. This team, the other Waikato teams just come in. They won their race as well, beating my poor Ruffies. But both Waikato teams look like they're going to be up there.
I hope, I hope. Raiders, first, second, final, eh?
Okay, well, thanks, mate. I hope you enjoy the rest of your night and we'll go back up to Mike. Thanks.
Thank you. Great work, guys. Well, just had a, had a really cool thing come up. Regan O'Brien just come up and told me that the Gallup family have put up a thousand dollars for the best crash of the weekend. That is an absolutely stunning amount of money and big thank you to everyone involved with the Gallup family for that. Thousand dollars. I know we're going to see some big hits as this meeting progresses through tonight and tomorrow for our finals. Wonganui Vulcans on the track. This is team's race number seven. Vulcans will start on the outside. There's the first of your fake outs. Twenty-six of Kalen Mooney. Looked like he was going to head straight to the grid. Did a U-turn. Has slipped up in behind. Couldn't quite see the number of that Stormers car that just came to the line. Ninety-six. Carl Giddy will go from the inside for the Stormers. Looks like the fifteen of Sturzaker goes from two. Then it's the three NZ for the Vulcans, Cody Lockett on three. The thirty-two, Todd Duffy, he was in the wars in that first team's race. He will go from four. Five-one-seven. Stormers driver Mark Woods on five. One-six-four Rahiri Connor. I think it is. That is on grid position number six. So it might, yeah, three-six-four on the side of that car. So Vulcans in round number one, taking huge amount of points, a hundred and thirty from their first team's race. Stratford Stormers with work to do. Just forty points. Pit gate locked and loaded. Team's race number seven, Napier City Council, East Coast Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams. Let's go racing this time. Two cars on the brakes. Already got a driver turned around before the entry of turn one. And it's the ninety-six that's out in front. Carl Giddy for the Stormers. And he gets back on the brakes as they come down into turn number three. But the fifteen of Sturzaker is going to take him to the fence. Sturzaker takes over the lead. Five-one-seven Mark Woods gives chase in second place. Then it's the twenty-six V of Kalen Mooney. Vulcans running one and three. Sparks flying up there at turn two. And Duffy again going into block mode in the thirty-two car. Cody Lockett tried to turn him around. Sturzaker gets in the mix as well. Car pinned to the wall on the back straight. It's one of the, it's the three-six-four car of Connor. And I think Wood as well. Race leader is the fifteen of Sturzaker. Vulcans running one and two with the twenty-six of Kalen Mooney running shotgun. Ninety-six for the Stormers. Carl Giddy there in third. Three drivers on the lead lap. The twenty-six of Mooney tried to squeeze. I think it was the thirty-two of Duffy to the grass. Duffy was able to avoid that. And is now going to lie and wait for the twenty-six of Mooney. He's going to drive back down on him and give him the push off turn four. And Duffy will get spun. Finally, the five-one-seven back into this team's race. Mark Woods finally gets released. And the three-six-four of Rahiri Connor will sit low down on the pole line on turn four and wait. Here comes the twenty-six of Mooney. Sturzaker is still the race leader. The fifteen V car. Half race distance, five, now four to go. Sturzaker just sitting in behind his teammate. The three NZ of Cody Lockett. Three-six-four V of Connor further back, but has made up the position, moves up into sixth. Five-one-seven still sitting on the infield. Looks like his race is done for Mark Woods. It's one of the Stormers drivers out. Three to go. Not much action in the second half of this team's race. They're trying to preserve these points. Keep an eye on the three, four, three-six-four of Connor. Goes into block mode in the ninety-six of Carl Giddy. Stormers driver still in second place in the ninety-six car. As Duffy once again gets taken to the wall by the three NZ. Lockett pins him in. White flag, one to go. The Vulcans are looking strong. On the brake down the back straight. Round the outside goes the twenty-six of Mooney. And Connor has done great work on the brake and will take the ninety-six car of Giddy to the wall. Check it, flag falls. Sturzaker's going to pick up the win for the Vulcans. While possibly the quietest team's race we've had all evening. And it looks like a one-two for the Vulcans with the twenty-six of Kalen Mooney coming in a lap down in second place. Ninety-six Stormers car, Carl Giddy for third. Three NZ V Cody Lockett, fourth. Thirty-two S Todd Duffy, fifth. And three-six-four V Rahiri Connor will pick up the sixth place. A provisional points total, a hundred and sixty to thirty-five. Wow, if that's a hundred and sixty for the Vulcans, that's going to put them on a mess of two hundred and ninety points. And most certainly has to be a tier one semifinal. Well, there's a lot of blocking and slower racing going on in that team's race. Certainly wasn't the hard hits, big hits put in. And the Vulcans will not be disappointed about that. That will lessen the work that they will need to do before tomorrow. Just seemed like the Stormers just couldn't. Just seemed like the Stormers just couldn't quite get into that. Good work there by Duffy, just having a look at the replays on the screen, thanks to Pits TV. And Duffy really has been in the mix, putting his car everywhere it needed to be. But just the team coming up shy and they may even be struggling to make the tier two Deserved round of applause there for the checkered flag.
Hey, Mike, I'm down here with a couple of your lovely track volunteers, actually. Hey, can you tell us what your name is?
Lisa.
Lisa, I was in the shed before and you're the person I was talking about on the live stream who's asking all the questions. If there is a concern with one of the drivers and he may seem a little bit unsure of the answer or not sure what's going on, what's the next step from there? Are you the one who instructs them where to go?
I would send them up to the St John people to get checked out again and make sure they were fine.
So what kind of checks do St Johns do as opposed to what you're doing?
They'll just do a prior check and things like that, make sure there's no more injuries and stuff, so yeah.
So it's your job to ask some of the basic questions and then I guess they look in their eyes and take their heart rate and things like that?
Yeah, you check that their eyes are good and they've still got their humour and things like that and they haven't changed before racing and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, and that's really good checks. So hey, Lisa, it's lovely to meet you. I would love to have a cabraman here, but we haven't, but listen, you're on the screen before, you're doing a great job. Thank you. No worries. Booker, who are you down there with?
I'm here with Young Bradley, mate. You've had a real great intro into teams' racing. You led a couple of races, that first one unlucky, mate, but that just comes down to experience. How much are you loving your experience here tonight?
Yeah, pretty speechless to be honest. It's a whole different world of racing, you know, going out there knowing you're going to get smashed, knowing you've got one job to do and, you know, there's always a second one there if you need to do it. But yeah, it's unreal, it's cool.
Mate, I think you've done exceptionally well. Like I said the other night, as long as you give yourself 110%, there's nothing more you can do. But what you've done tonight shows that you have got real potential to be a teams' racer, mate.
Yeah, I think I gave it all I got for, you know, my first time teams' racing. Definitely got lots to learn still, but yeah, from tonight, I feel pretty comfortable to do it again, definitely.
Oh, yes, so Mike's in my ear, he's just saying to ask you about years and years ago, you had a Orange Ruffies teams' body, used to sit in that, pretend to drive, mate?
Yeah, I knew that was going to come up. Yeah, I think, oh, I think it was Peter Barry's, one of his last bodies he had in the team and somehow we ended up with it and yeah, I used to pretend I was a stock car driver in the backyard and yeah, it's pretty cool to have it on my car now and be doing what he was doing, so yeah.
It must make it more special now being on your opening teams' racing to be an Orange Ruffie, mate, with that history.
Oh, for sure, it's definitely something cool to look back on and, you know, I'll be able to look back on it in many years to come as well.
Look, mate, you've done a fantastic job out there. Congratulations on what you've achieved tonight. You guys haven't quite got to the finish line, but you've still got plenty of racing to go tomorrow. I hope you enjoy tomorrow night, mate, and well done.
Yeah, thank you, been so close, just hear that last corner twice.
That's all it takes, mate. Hey, back up to you, Mike, thanks, mate.
Thanks, Booker. Well, seeing a little bit of the wet stuff out there, looking through the back window in the com box.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately we've got a bit of the wet stuff, but we've also got Kalen Mooney who came in on the tow truck. I thought that you were cruising in that race and I thought, oh, it's just cruising, but obviously it was a bit more.
Yeah, a bit of gearbox problems, ran out of gears, so.
Oh, no. Hey, everyone's jumped in here really quickly, do you think it's going to be fixed for tomorrow?
Yeah, definitely, we'll get that changed over this afternoon, in a couple of minutes and be good to go again.
I love this, you guys can do this in a couple of minutes. I drive an Audi, I take mine down to the service station and I don't see it for another three months, it's crazy, you guys can do it overnight.
Yeah, no, we get pretty good at it, we've done a few nowadays, so yeah, the team will get stuck in and get it sorted for me and I just hop back and drive.
Awesome, good luck, hey, and we'll see you again tomorrow. Well done on two race wins as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Cheers.
Well, I can tell you this next teams' race, event number eight on your programme, the Gisborne Gladiators versus the Meani Maulers. Long time of history between these two teams. Gladiators picking up 155 points from round one, Maulers 150. Not much in it on that point sheet. And a big win for one of these teams will most certainly be a tier one semi-final. And even quite possibly, both teams could make it through to the top four conceivably if one team was to get 100 points, another one the 95, it is possible. This is going to be an intense matchup. Gladiators will go from the grid position one. We already see the 71 car of Ethan Bruce, already parked up. Now, a little bit of moisture has fallen on this track. It'll make it a little bit more interesting. 75 for the Maulers. Newport's Auto Electrical on the back of that race car, that's Leroy O'Reilly. Provides plenty of entertainment regularly on race nights, the 75 car. Catch fences still open, three minute bell for the 75.
Hey, why were waiting for some of these cars to come onto the track and wait for the three minute bell? I actually want to give a big, big birthday shout out to Rah. Would you believe, he's 37 years old and still teams' racing. Oh gosh, I don't know how some of these drivers put their body through it, but we're wishing Rah a very, very happy birthday.
Awesome, yeah, we love doing the birthday shout outs. Thankfully mine wasn't today, slipped away yesterday and it worked out perfectly. Well, the rain just keeps on falling, it is just a drizzle, it was actually scheduled for around six o'clock, so we're about an hour and a quarter later than that. It isn't supposed to be for too long and as long as we don't get heavy rain, then we could be good to go for those last three teams' races. That's all we've got left tonight. This is the one I'm really looking forward to, the Gladiators versus the Maulers. I do like humble 46 car in those colours. Tow truck doing a bit of a skid there on turn three as they still work on the 75 of O'Reilly. Not sure how much time is left. So these sort of conditions change the game plan a little bit for teams' racing. It's going to make it a little bit of a wider race line. In fact, looking out the window there, that drizzle does look like it's falling a little bit heavier. It'll be interesting to see what the call is. Pit Gate is being opened, so this race has been delayed. We will have a rain delay for this meeting. Please go and find somewhere dry that you can hang out for a little while and we'll wait and see if this rain shower just moves on by, it is scheduled to do that. And then they'll do a little bit of track remedial work, this is why we start at 4:30 this late in the season, it's only 18 minutes past seven, we've got plenty of time to get these last three teams' races through. Tomorrow and Sunday's weather looking great, well, it is definitely falling heavier. So we'll put a little bit of music on and maybe go and tee up some interviews for you a little bit after that as well. Sit tight.
Oh, thank you for your patience for everyone who's waiting at home, we're waiting here nervously, I'm actually down here with Dion Henderson. Dion, you reckon that the night was over, but it might be looking a bit promising now?
Yeah, yeah, we might get away with it now, weather's starting to come right, we'll see, I don't know, we'll see what happens.
Surprisingly, it can be like raining here in the Hawkes Bay, but it's not actually cold, we're actually still quite warm down here, but we are waiting patiently to see what is going to happen. Have you had a chance to look at the track yet?
No, 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 not yet, we're going to have a walk up in a minute, the boys have just come back from having a look, so I'd say it's pretty wet, but they've got the track guys out there going through that now, so we'll see if they can get that sorted for us and we'll go from there.
Yeah, hopefully we can get these last four races of the evening done and then it doesn't mess up all the plans and what have you for tomorrow, because of course, famous, you know, when you're teams' racing, there's the famous whoopsie, oh no, all looking sky, whatever, we all know what that means. Dion, tell us what's happening.
It's starting to spit on us again now, so hopefully this is just going to pass through and we don't have to deal with it, but we'll see. If we've got a race tomorrow and we've got to do three in a day, we'll do three in a day, I'm not too stressed about it, we've done it before.
We're actually quite lucky to get as much done as what we have done because it was meant to rain earlier on in the evening, so we've come so far, so good.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, I mean, we came down here this week expecting to not even race tonight really, I thought it was going to be a Saturday, Sunday meeting, I've reorganised work off for Saturday, Sunday, so I mean, it'd be nice if we could get this in and then I can go back to my normal schedule.
Yeah, Dion, talk us through your night so far, unfortunately you didn't come away with the win in your first race, your next one of course is up against the Alley Cats, but talk us through the morale down in the team.
Yeah, well, we're in pretty good spirits still, just disappointed obviously, expect a little bit more of ourselves, just, yeah, come up a little bit short against Wellington. I mean, we were close and it was right there, but just a couple of little things at the end and just not quite going our way, so you take a look at it, it was still close and that's the main thing, we put up a good fight.
Yeah, absolutely, and they're a hard team to beat as Wellington, when they're on fire, they're on fire, eh? And unfortunately that young gun, Tim Parker, 21W, he was just clever enough to run away with that win.
Yeah, yeah, it did, he got away early and just kind of got himself in a good spot and got himself, yeah, and got himself a win, which is good and it was good for them. I mean, their quality side, back to back three NZ, they're good, we knew that, so you can't take them lightly and we tried everything we had to get it, but you come up short, eh?
Tell us, Dion, are you taking the same kind of mentality into the race against Auckland because they're two totally different teams? Can you race the same race or is it a totally different outlook now?
It's a different outlook now, we've kind of worked the points over and, well, we think we can still make top four if some stuff goes our way, so we'll go down swinging, we're going to need a big score here, so we're going to have to really give it hell, but if we get one, we get one, if we don't, we don't, just want to get a win more than anything to be fair.
What was the team talk when you came in after that? I know that Tony is a very calm, calm manager for you guys as well, so he would have been like, come on, guys, chin up, but I don't want you to tell us what you actually discussed because of course that's not privy for us, but what was the actual discussions in teams in terms of, hey, you did great, you did great, I mean, you can't take anything away from you?
Nah, nah, everyone was all in pretty good spirits about the whole item, everyone did their job, Wellington just did theirs a little bit better and one of those things, how it happens and yeah, everyone's in good spirits, just a little bit frustrated.
And it's just those little things too, just so tiny, I wouldn't even want to call them mistakes, but those little events, I suppose you could say, that happen on the track, that can just change in an instant and you could be winning and then bang, you're upside down.
Yeah, I mean, we were one-two for five laps there and that just come unstuck at the end there, old Ethan Levine got me with three or four to go and Tim flicked me and that was that and just couldn't get myself back in the lead, I think we were still leading with two to go, so just bum, it really, but that is what it is.
Hey, we always like speaking to you, Dion, you're one of the true characters of the sport, you came out of the gates, first man on top of the car, we absolutely loved that about you.
Yeah, it's good, you've got to put a bit of a show on for the crowd and try and be Mr Entertainment and I enjoy the parades, they're a lot of fun and you've got to get on the roof and wind everyone up and then get myself all barred up for it, so it's good, we're enjoying it.
Well, that's part of it, isn't it? You have to get yourself kind of geared up and in that mindset as well. Tell us, it's coming very, very closely to the end of the year and the end of the racing season for a lot of your drivers, what does the next couple of weeks look like for you?
Nah, straight in the shed after this, I'm done, I've had enough, we've done 35 meetings this year, I have absolutely had a guts full to be quite honest, it's been 24/7, so nah, I'll be happy to see the end of it.
Listen, we're going to all run for cover now, this is getting a little bit heavier and we love speaking to you, we love your insights, we wish you a very happy off-season by the way, I think you absolutely deserve it.
Hey, g'day, everyone, hey, it's unfortunate the rain has won here at Meani Speedway for our Peter Barry Teams event. It will be run tomorrow, the rest of that starting at 4pm, earlier start, 4pm tomorrow. Unfortunately, the weather has beaten us, we had some spectacular racing tonight, we hope you enjoyed the coverage here at the Pits Media, Pits TV, it's been fantastic night. Oh, here we go, here's Bianca just getting here in time to join me, what a night it's been, mate.
Yeah, it sure has, golly me, I heard the call was right down the other end of the pits in the fan zone, having photos taken, would you believe, so I had to rush it back, but we do thank everybody for sticking with us, yeah? Hang on, there's a message coming in for Jason, bear with us, guys.
Okay.
Okay, so did you get sent to that, Booker?
Yeah, I get that, so what he's saying is for the last four races that we have tonight, we'll be carrying over from the stream tonight, tomorrow, so you should just be able to log in as per, okay, say you logged out tonight and logged back in again, that's how you'll get your stream tomorrow and then it'll be a new stream you'll have to purchase for the second part of the racing.
So same, same.
Yeah, yeah, 100%. So yeah, so you don't have to pay to see the rest of the four races that you would have seen tonight, but once that's done, you will have to pay for the next part as it, and let's face it, it's well worth doing, this racing is spectacular and the guys tonight were pumped and just an amazing, amazing event so far, Bianca.
Yeah, absolutely, we did know the rain was coming, it was expected a little bit earlier, so we thought that we were going to be good to go and then all of a sudden, literally out of nowhere, it just started. It wasn't heavy rain, it wasn't a lot of rain, but it was just enough to make it unsafe and like we keep saying time and time again, the driver's safety is absolute priority here and there's no way that anybody is going to send the drivers out on a wet track.
A hundred percent, and what people have got to realise, it's not just the wet track, it's the wet infield.
Yes.
And if a car gets spun to that infield, it's got no way to stop, can go straight off and into the wall and that's where the driver's safety has to come into it, so just stick with us and tomorrow, you're going to see some fantastic racing again.
Yeah, these guys will go and fix their cars and do what they need to do, they have debriefs, they'll try and get new plans and attacks and what have you and it'll be just racing as normal. It has been fantastic racing so far, couple of surprises, especially with that Roader routine, didn't seem like they were flying on all cylinders at all, so they, I think, will have a really good debrief this afternoon, or sorry, this evening back at the hotel.
Oh, 100%, there was a few surprises thrown in there for us, we almost saw the Ruffies take out the first one, so close, unlucky for them, but some of the teams we thought were going to really be on top.
Yeah.
Weren't, so let's look forward to tomorrow night because I bet it's going to be bigger and better.
Yeah, let's hope so, but listen, we thank everybody who has streamed in so far, we do appreciate it, I want to say thanks to Karen and Paige especially who have given us lots of messages, private messages to let us know that the stream is great. We're going to cut it off for now, we're going to see you guys tomorrow and this, we can absolutely guarantee the weather is different, the sun is going to be shining.
100%, sunny Hawkes Bay tomorrow, people, thanks for joining us and we'll see you tomorrow.
Cheers.